Good morning. We're going to go ahead and get started. It's 8:33. We are going to start with an invocation from Pastor Lance Schmidt of St. Paul's Cathedral Episcopal Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jalen Tubbs of Boy Scouts PAC 1636. Please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious God, giver of every good gift, and from you all just mercies and all good things do derive, we ask for your presence here this day. We ask that you guide and govern what we do here. We ask for the courage to imagine what is possible and a heart to remember those that have less than what we have. May all the things which we do here this day fall in line with your justice, your justice that seeks mercy for the poor, the forgotten, and the destitute. May each member of this council open their minds and their hearts to dream about the possibilities of a beautiful city that is built in accordance with the goodness that your mercy has shown unto us, oh God. Lead us, guide us, protect us, and most especially, warm our hearts, stir our imaginations, and open our minds to dream for what is possible in this world. We thank you, oh God, for the love that you have shown to all of us this day. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Lance, and thank you so much, Jalen. Great job. All right. I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we will start with a couple of presentations. One is under Office of the Mayor, item 3A, and then I will be pulling up from items from council, item 10C, that was cosponsored by Councilmember Stone, Greenwell, Hammond, Nice, and Stone Cypher. So I will now make my way to the front. Why don't we start with the item from council? This is a very special day that we would like to potentially declare today. We haven't voted yet, but to hear a little bit more about it, I think I would ask the clerk to read this resolution declaring Lynn Rostaschel Historic Preservation Day.
Whereas Lynn Rostaschel is an architectural historian, author, and photographer who has traveled throughout Oklahoma and has written extensively about Oklahoma's rich architectural heritage for many national publications and websites. Whereas Lynn, as co-founder of the Oki Maad Squad, created a petition to ask Oklahoma City Council to declare the First Christian Church a landmark as one of the greatest mid-century modern architectural marvels in America. Whereas Lynn is the granddaughter of R. Dwayne Connor, one of the architects who designed the First Christian Church in 1956, a building of which she has said, "There is no other building like this in the world." Whereas Lynn has served as Secretary of the Preservation Oklahoma Board of Directors, a body which she believes communities are enriched when we connect history to our present and future, and which publishes an annual list of Oklahoma's most endangered historic places. Whereas Lynn serves on the board of the Oklahoma City Foundation for Architecture, which has as its mission the promotion of design excellence in our physical environment through education and projects. Lynn is known for using vintage images from her personal collection, the Oklahoma History Center, and other resources to trace the exciting evolution of modern architecture in the capital city. Whereas this council desires to recognize Lynn Rostaschel for her dedication to preserving Oklahoma's rich architectural heritage, including gathering nearly 14,000 signatures in support of preserving the Donae Building, which was ultimately saved. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Lynn Rostaschel for her dedication to the preservation of Oklahoma's rich legacy and architectural heritage, and do hereby further proclaim November 5, 2019, to be Lynn Rostaschel Historic Preservation Day in Oklahoma City to raise awareness of the importance of historic preservation, including mid-century modern architecture.
Thank you. And before we vote on this -- yeah, go ahead. Before we vote on this, we'll have some remarks from council, but I think we'll maybe start with, I understand, of all things, we're going to let Steve Lackmire speak at a council meeting.[527.51][527.51](laughter) And I'd like to invite Steve up here to say a few words.
Okay. I'm kind of humbled to be the person that speaks here. There's so many others, like Terry Sadlers and others, and didn't know if it'd be appropriate even, but Lynn is an amazing person, and I really want to emphasize her passion was in mid-century architecture, which we don't have enough appreciation of. That's what she would tell all of you if she could be here this morning, and I can tell you that she would be very gracious and very classy, even as she debates and argues for saving these buildings and remembering this architecture and our heritage. I'll say what I think she's thinking now, do my best. Councilman, you live in a very special neighborhood. It's her neighborhood. It's where I spent my childhood. It is the best example of mid-century architecture, Quail Creek. Do all you can to protect that and guard against it being ruined by McMansions and other questionable decisions when neighborhoods evolve. And don't give up on First Christian Church. I know she's thinking that right now, and she's thinking up a strategy. How do you do that? And she knows that you've got to be proactive, and she's wanting you to know that. And she wants everyone to know that Gold Dome is another place that must be preserved. This is an economic engine for us on Route 66, and if we ever lose it, that would be a terrible, terrible tragedy. So now I've done troublemaking that I'm not sure that she would actually get into, but I know it's on her thoughts. I know that's what she's thinking. I feel safe on this one. So to the council of mayor, you can't be honoring a better person. You did the right thing with honoring Randy Floyd earlier this year, another preservationist, and Lynn is the perfect next one. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve.[671.43][671.43](applause) Well, we know Lynn is watching, and I don't know that the TV cameras pan this crowd, but this is a full chamber of supporters for Lynn. Would the council like to say a few words? Maybe we'll start here at word eight.
I'd first like to start out with, I think some of her family and friends are here. If you are family, would you please stand, and let's give them a big round of applause.[697.13][697.13](applause) The other thing I wanted to say to Lynn personally, every time you came to the Horseshoe, I always admired your humor, your wit. Every time you came to the Horseshoe, I always cherished your intellect, your educational points that you made. You never scolded, you never demanded, you always educated, and you always taught. But most importantly, the thing that I always remember is your passion. I love your passion for historical preservation, and so I am so proud you were able to receive this resolution. I hope you have a great day. You have a great day with your family, and Lynn, God bless you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to also commend her for the wonderful work that she's done throughout the years. In my introduction to Ms. Lynn is when we were in the process of trying to save the Brockway Center, and she didn't know me from Adam, but she knew history and she knew historic preservation. And that's when she stepped in and said, "What can I do?" And it's people like that in our city and our communities that we need and we have to continue to support even in their efforts. And throughout her journey and this journey of the Brockway Center, she was there every single step of the way. So, you know, we have to realize also, with the Brockway Center, it being Oklahoma City Federation for Colored Women's Clubs, there were allies, and she was an ally for women of color in helping to preserve this building. So we appreciate her efforts, and definitely, God bless her in this journey that she has to face throughout right now, and our thoughts and prayers are definitely with her and her family. So thank you, Ms. Lynn, for all that you've done, and thank you. I know you showed up, and that means something when you're just learning how this process works myself, and you have people that know what historic preservation is, and they say, "Yes, that deserves to be preserved. Let's do that." And those hands and those names and all of the effort that she had in this process, I am very grateful and appreciative of, and to now see the outcome because that building is still standing. And it's because of people like her that that building is still standing.
Yeah, I'll just speak to, similarly, Councilman Nice. Learning the processes of council and being rather new, it's people like Lynn who bring issues forward to us that are really the eyes and ears in the community of what's going on, and without folks like Lynn, we wouldn't be able to do what we do, because I often have just learned that we can be conduits for people's passion and advocacy. So I appreciate all she's done for historical preservation.
Anyone else? James?
Yeah. So, building on what councilperson Hammond said, I really want to thank Lynn for everything she's done to engage the City Council as a resident. I've been talking with my UCO and OCU students about the connection between art and place, and in doing so, found myself revisiting the French philosopher Alexis de Tocqueville, who loved America when he visited here in its immediate aftermath, like our formation. He thought that our religious liberty was just this incredible experiment, but he warned us too that the -- this individual that we were now having for the first time, right? The idea that the individual can decide for her himself where to worship and how to live her/his life, that there would be a tendency to pull back and get so lost in the individual's day-to-day that they might disconnect from civic engagement. And Lynn is the shining example of the opposite of that. And it is so important that people who hear this, who see this day and this proclamation, that they know that this is their city government. This is theirs. It's ours. We are all a part of this, and it doesn't end the moment you vote. It continues when you show up every other Tuesday or when you email one of us. It's going to be really hard for me to say this next thing because it's very emotional for me, but when she wrote the piece that she did to save the Donae Building, I, when I first moved here from Stillwater after graduate school, I learned that the Hilo Club, which calls that building home, in the 1980s, when the state government, the city government, and the federal government turned their backs on our people who were dying of AIDS. It wasn't HIV then, it was just, you just went straight to full-blown AIDS. And as a young kid who knew I was attracted to other guys, I never thought I'd call Oklahoma home, and I was already making plans to go to San Francisco and New York, where there were thriving LGBT communities. And then I started learning the history of our LGBT community, and in that building, in the Hilo Club, the owners of those bars took care of our LGBT Oklahoma Cityans. It was our bars![1058.47][1058.47](sighs) It's hard for me to say for so many reasons, one of them being that my father was an alcoholic and died of alcoholism, so I don't really like to promote bars in that way. It's hard talking about this history, but she knew we must. She knew we must. She knew we must preserve this history because the next generation's going to need it to survive and to thrive. And when she honored that history by getting my predecessor to do what he did and preserve it with the language that we did, that's going to be important. That's going to be important. Forty percent of our youth homelessness is LGBT, and one day, they're going to know the story of that building, a story they don't teach you in your K-12 schools. From the bottom of my heart, thank you. And thank you, Mark, for, Councilman Stone Cypher, for bringing this up. I really appreciate you, and just thanks to your family. It will endure. It will endure.
All right. Well, why don't we adopt this resolution? Mark, you want to make a motion? Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. We have one more presentation to make this morning. It is to one of our amazing teachers here in Oklahoma City, and we are joined today by Darwin Franklin. Darwin, would you -- Mr. Franklin, would you come up? Here, stand right here. We would like to learn a little bit more about what you do for the kids of Oklahoma City, so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Darwin L. Franklin has been named Teacher of the Month for November by the Millwood Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Darwin received his bachelor's degree in mathematics from Kansas Wesleyan University and his master's degree in secondary education from Pittsburgh State University, he is currently working on his doctorate in Educational Leadership and Management at Capella University. Whereas Darwin is a graduate of Millwood High's class of 1995, and he now teaches advanced math at Millwood High. He has been teaching for 18 years, six at Millwood, one in another Oklahoma school district, and 11 out of state. Whereas Darwin has been the Millwood High football coach since the 2013-14 school year. Under Coach Franklin's leadership, the 2014 team was the 2A state football runner-up, and the 2017 and 2018 squads were 2A state champions. Whereas Darwin was born and raised in Oklahoma City, and he is very passionate about students bettering themselves, not only educationally, but socially and ethically. He and his family, his wife's name is Courtney, and daughters Michaela and Jocelyn faithfully serve and worship at the Broadway and Britton campus of Life Church. Whereas Darwin considers his greatest contribution and accomplishment in education is consistently motivating, encouraging, and setting an unwavering high level of expectation for all his students. He believes every student is capable of learning and will rise to the occasion and be successful. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Darwin Franklin on his selection as the November 2019 Teacher of the Month by Millwood Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
All right. Well, Darwin, we are so proud and grateful for the service you provide the young people of Oklahoma City, and we'd like to go ahead and adopt this resolution. Millwood, being in word seven, would you like to do the honors?
Well, first of all, congratulations, Coach. We call him Chop. And a lot of people may not know this, but his dad coached when he was playing football at Millwood, and now he's following in his dad's footsteps, and he is the head coach at Millwood High School. So I don't think that was part of the resolution, but I wanted to make sure I said that, because I think it's important, as we continue to talk about history, of those types of things that happen when you are educated in a system and also when you are influenced by your parents, and being that example, and also being the state champs two years in a row. Now, were you on the championship team at Millwood? Okay. I remember, I couldn't remember if that was before you or after you, but I --
I was ball boy.
That's right. Oh, he was ball boy. So he was a part of it anyway, even being a ball boy. But congratulations. Thank you for all you do, and your humbleness speaks for itself. So thank you for your commitment to Millwood Public Schools. And with that, I move this resolution.
All right. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You are the Teacher of the Month.[1411.63][1411.63](applause) A few words, Mr. Franklin?
Thank you.[1422.83][1422.83](laughter)
That's a few. All right. Thank you so much. That's yours to keep.[1427.83][1427.83](laughter) We will now return to page one of the printed agenda, item three, Office of the Mayor. We handled item A. We are now on item B. There was a, I would argue, a Scrivener's error. Obviously, the fall meeting was not, is not going to be in January. It was, in fact, a winter meeting. That was noticed. The amendment to that was noticed properly, and so it is the winter meeting, and I would entertain a motion. This is for my travel and reimbursement to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors' winter meeting in January. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and with the six required votes. We're now at appointments. We have appointments from item C through item K to the Bond Advisory Committee, the Building Code Commission, the Downtown Design Review Committee, Game and Fish Commission, CVB, City County Board of Health, Mary Gardens Foundation, the Planning Commission, and the Residential Building Code Commission. We could take items C through K with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We move on now to the Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item five, request for uncontested continuances, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, we have several today. First, on page six, under item 7J, this will be, is a request by the applicant to defer this item to November the 19th. On page 16, item 10A10, S.P.U.D. 1137, this is a request for deferral for two weeks by Councilwoman Hammond and with the agreement of the applicant.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you say that one again?
That was 10A10, page 16?
Okay.
I'm sorry, 9A10. I'm sorry. 9A10, I've got to get my Roman numerals right.
Page 16, 9A10.
9A10 is S.P.U.D. 1137, so that'll be a two-week deferral. Item 9A13 is S.P.U.D. 1151. This is requested by Councilwoman Nice with the agreement of the applicant. So those are both deferrals to November the 19th. On page 18, and all of these items that we'll list are to be stricken from the agenda. On page 18, item 9F1K, 332, no, 332, 332, Southeast 50th Street, strike, the owner is repaired. On page 23, item 9G1K.
Your page numbers are different than ours, maybe.
Oh, are they?
9G1 is on page 19. Is that what you're?
Yes, it's 9G1. Let me just make sure I'm there. Yes. So item K, 12412, Whispering Hollow Drive. The owner has secured. Item N, 716, Southeast 11th Street, the owner has secured. Item R, 4433, Northwest 17th Street, the owner has secured. Item W, 3017, Southwest 25th Street, that is occupied, so we'll have to re-notify. Item double A, 2932, Northwest 30th Street, the owner has secured. Item AN, 332, Southeast 50th Street, the owner has secured. Item AP, 2720, Northwest 60th Street, the owner has secured. Item AU, 518, Northwest 96th Street, that is occupied. Item AV, 1200, Southwest 96th Street, the owner has secured. And then item 9H1, which is on page 21, 20? I'm just off on these. Item F, 12412, Whispering Hollow Drive, owner has secured. Item J, 4433, Northwest 17th Street, the owner has secured. Item N, 3017, Southwest 25th Street, that home is occupied. Item R, 2932, Northwest 30th Street, the owner has secured. Item AD, 332, Southeast 50th Street, the owner has secured. Item AJ, 518, Northwest 96th Street, that home is occupied. Item AK, 1200, Southwest 96th Street, the owner has secured. And that is all the items I have.
Item six, revocable permits. Six days of revocable permit with the Putnam City Schools for the 12th Annual Putnam City Cancer Classic on November 9, using Wheeler Park and the Oklahoma City Community Foundation River Trail. We have Eddie Wright, who has signed up to speak.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. My name is Eddie Wright. I serve --
I serve as the Athletic Director at Putnam City High School. I'm speaking on behalf of Putnam City School District today in request for a revocable permit for our 12th Annual Putnam City Cancer Classic. We hope to have this event at Wheeler Park, where we've done the last couple of years. Currently, we have 377 online registrants and another 740 hard copy, which is mostly made up of district employees and students. The event will take place on this Saturday, November the 9th. The race begins at 8:30 with our 5K, 9:15 for awards, and then 10:30 for a fun run. One of the greatest things about this event this year is that it is 100% ran and organized by students and our leadership and student council organizations at Putnam City High School. I'm a huge advocate for giving them the autonomy and opportunity to make decisions on this, to organize it, to have success, and oftentimes fail as well, only to learn how to do it better next year. And it's been a great opportunity for me to kind of serve as their liaison, and I just hope you guys allow us to have this event again for the 12th year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
Well, it sounds like a wonderful time. I will move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great event. All right, we'll now recess the council meeting, and we'll convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through H, but it looks like we have someone who signed up to speak on an item here?
Yes.
Okay.
Douglas Park Preliminary Report. Item B, MFAB.
MFAB. Okay, all right. So why don't we go ahead and handle that?
Yes, hello. Zenithon Warrior Jr., addressed to 5712 North Lottie Avenue. I was, wanted to talk about concerning the Douglas Recreational Center with that, and looking through that preliminary report that I just saw, is that up for the docket today? The city manager's looking at me strangely.
On which one? So it's item B?
Talking about the Douglas Recreation Center that was, is funded by the General Obligation Bond of 2017.
Right.
Exactly where are we in the status of that particular project, and is it going to be up for bid, or what?
So this is the preliminary report, it hasn't gone out for bid yet, so you mean the bid on the actual contracting?
Yes, right. Had with that. Had with that.
So Doug Cupper is here, our Parks and Recreation Director, can give you an update on that.
Okay. Good morning, Doug Cupper, Parks and Recreation. This is approval of preliminary design plan. This is authorizing the consultants to take the next step to get us better estimates on construction dollars, to see how much more we might be able to build with the geo-bond funds that we have available. Again, this is just an approval of the preliminary plan, so that we can start working with the consultants to get better cost estimates and go to bid documents. So there will be more opportunities for us to interact with the design firm.
Well, I'm certainly, certainly happy and very pleased that that particular, the unit is going to be built there with that. It's my understanding this has been about a four or five-year process to where we got this particular point with that. My neighborhood has, was involved with the various surveys that were done for various projects concerning the general obligation bond 2017, which is project is being, is being funded with, had with that. Well, I looked over the history of it, it had listed there that the structure was going to be up to 60,000 square feet. Has that been modified to be reduced to low under 40,000 square feet? Is that preliminary plans at this particular time?
Again, these are preliminary plans where they, the estimates that the design consultants have produced for us gets the project within bids right now. As we progress through the next phase, they will be refining their cost estimates. We originally hoped that we could afford a 60,000-square-foot building when we started down this process in 15, 2015, and 16, developing the 2017 geo-bond proposition. But as prices go up and the consultants do the design, and we are trying to fit in the elements that, that the citizens asked us to put into this, this plan, it may end up being a 30,000-square-foot building because of costs to construct, but we won't know that until we get, get into, get from this point to 30% drawings to 60% drawings, and then 90% drawings. We won't know how many square foot we might actually end up with until we get through this next phase.
Well, this, this project is going to be, is really going to be a very excellent project, I believe, when it's all said and done. It is going to replace a building that's over 75, 80-years-old with the Douglas Center that's there currently now, and I believe that particular building is around, little over 30,000 square feet that they have with that. And I can remember some fond times spending there at the Douglas Center back in the 60s in my upper elementary and middle school days, that facility with that area, along with the improvement that's going to be done to the golf course there at the clubhouse for the Jimmy Stewart Golf Course, that area with that. I would hope, I would hope the council would take consideration when this, as the plan goes forward, to look at this as a community type of project, a community recreational center, and that we have over, oh, just a little bit, about half a mile away, we have about 1,000 middle school students that can be able to take advantage of the particular recreation center. There's also going to be nearby high schools there, Douglas High School. Also, about two miles away, there's also Northeast Classen High School, this particular facility can be used also. So I would, would hope that would be something that could be included with, including some various types of activities that will enhance the things that the students can do there at the recreational center, both in the Oklahoma City School District, Millwood School District, and also to the South Crutcher School District, they're also with that. In consideration of this particular area, I was, want to take a opportunity possibly to extend some of the things that the Oklahoma City School District's done with their expansion of their pathway to greatness, where they're going to be involving various types of additional activities, fine arts activities, more things that be involved in visual schools, particular area. Also, they are doing quite a bit of extensive, extensive building, they're doing various types of athletic fields throughout the area also. With that natatorium that's going to be built there, we'll see, that is an excellent opportunity that the surrounding schools could actually use that particular facility, that pool, as a swimming, swimming practice for the various types of swim meets. We currently, I believe, only have very limited participation within Oklahoma City Schools within various types of swimming activities with that. In taking that consideration, I would hope that it would be possible to look at consideration of making the part of that particular pool area, they'd be compatible to be used for practice or for swim meets, for these students to be able to use for that. It's going to be, I think, hopefully be available by the fall of 2022, and we have an excellent opportunity for some of the students to be able to enhance their abilities of swimming, and then actually that's a low-cost, low-budget sport for both males and females could be, could be participating in with that. And looking through the plans, I saw that the, the pool area that is three lanes, that's used for lap pools, which could be an excellent area that could be used for, for competitive swimming. The pool, pool depth is from three and a half feet, the shallow end down to, down to nine feet, have for that. And looking through some various renditions and drawings, there were going to be some starting blocks there at the shallow end of the pool for, for platforms for swimmers going to start in that particular area. According to the OSSAA, the minimum depth if platforms are going to be used for starting blocks would need to be four feet deep, and currently I think the plans are three and a half feet they have for that. So I would hope that be some consideration that, as we move forward with the budget, to see if that could be something that could be modified to increase that depth, so they would have a cost possibility to be able to use particular areas for competitive swimming. I have talked with the superintendent of Oklahoma City Schools concerning that, and they, they are very excited about possibly talking with the city and making a partnership of using that particular facility for the surrounding, surrounding high schools that could be used for that. It could be an excellent opportunity for middle school students to be able to use for after 3 o'clock for various types of learning skills, learning centers, also different types of social skills can be used for a particular area for that. The other area I think that was used was the kitchen area. Right now, I believe there was some, some questions about what, where extent that's going to be able to use for a, for a kitchen area. I would hope that there would be a possibility of being able to extend the overall, overall size of the kitchen area, so it'd be, would be something that could be used for multiple use throughout the particular time for this. Now, this is the first time, I think, in the last 40 or 50 years that the Parks and Recs have built something like this with that, and as, as considerations is being, being looked at, as building this particular facility, I would hope some things we'll look at to, look at some long-range plans as, as much as possible, to try to, to get as much into the particular facility that we can use for all the communities that we have, that would be in that surrounding area for that. So, again, I wish, I hope that's something that we could possibly look to be a good partnership and community with, with the surrounding school districts, and get them to involve with these various students within the particular area.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Warrior, that those are things that we have definitely been looking into, and that's one of the main reasons why I asked to defer that, because I wanted to look into that further as far as what the plans are, what we're looking at, and also into consideration of our upcoming centers, and I just want to make sure that we're mindful too, that we are very careful about what happens with this center, and with, even with MAPS 4, with the possible new youth centers, that we're ensuring equitability when it comes to the Douglas Center. So therefore, if there is anything that's added to these other centers to come, and Douglas does not receive those benefits because they did not receive them first, they will have equitability and receive those same upgrades. So I just want to make sure we understand those expectations, and also I know with parks, we're talking about, even my concern has been with the area for the smaller, the smaller children, the tots, the littles, in that space, how we can make sure and ensure that we have enough room for the little ones to be able to be there if there are tournaments or whatever the case may be when it comes to. So there's, are still a lot of things to work through when it comes to-
Right.
-these, the plans that are in front of us, so I just want to ensure you that we are working through that. And I also have a concern, now that you brought that up and mentioned that. I've had a few people come to me and say that there is a possible fee that is coming for youth centers, and I don't know how we can address that, if that's true or if that's not true. We can kind of dispel that myth right now. Are you aware of fees coming to youth centers?
It's news to me, ma'am. We haven't even explored that possibility of fees. In conversations that we have had with y'all, as well as the mayor, we've talked about the investment funds being able to cover the cost of staffing and utilities and things along those lines with these youth centers.
For the MAPS 4 youth-
For the MAPS 4 youth centers.
But for some-
For the Douglas Rec Center?
Right.
Again, I, I think that since you were able to get Douglas included into the scenario of the investment, if MAPS 4 passes, we were looking at that opportunity as well. So most of our rec centers, we do have, our community centers, we do have fees for specific programs, but in the most part, they're still free to, for participants to come to the parks, so, or to the, to the center. So a lot of work still has to go on, on how these facilities will be operated, but I thought you did, did us a good solid by having the mayor include Douglas as part of that opportunity with the youth centers.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, because I've had a couple of people come to me and ask me about fees for youth centers, so I just wanted to just address that concern.
Again, I thought that's what you were talking about, was the youth centers, and I think we took care of that with, as part of the overall MAPS game plan, but-
But right now, you have with youth centers generally, there are fees for specialty programming, but not for just access to the facility.
That is correct. We, when we bring in instructors and things along those lines, we either try to find sponsors to cover the cost of those instructors, or we have a minimal fee to recover that, but the, to come and enter the facilities, they're free to use the, all of our community centers today.
And you have no plans to change that?
I do not have plans to change that.
Mayor, with MAPS 4, am I understanding correctly, with our proposed youth centers, that we are looking at endowment so that there would not be any fees?
Correct. Yeah, you know, we've never, as he just indicated, never charged admission to use our youth centers, and we don't want that to change, so that's why we included $30 million in operating endowments just for that. But still, again, with special programming, you could have, depending on what the program is, there may be fees associated with special programming, or special services or instruction. Something like a, yeah, special class-
Right.
-materials associated with it.
I'm just hoping that's not turning into every single program or every single service-
Right.
-that we will now offer at a, at a youth center.
That is not our intent. Obviously, if we want to take the youth to, to the civic center for performance, there's added costs there that may not be anticipated through the O&amp;M funds that we have available. We might want to take them camping to one of the state parks, those type of things. Again, it's all based on what the partners that we acquire to help operate these youth centers in the future can bring to the table and provide for our youth to, to have a better life, and get the counseling and the tutoring and the mentoring, and we, we look at all of the partners that are participating in the 16 projects that are in MAPS 4 as potential partners within the youth centers as well. Palomar, the homeless, the drug awareness that we have built into MAPS 4, those are all potential partners of ours to, to give the resources to our young people to, to be close, to be fed, to get the, the social services and the mentoring and the counseling that they need to, and that's the whole point of these youth centers, is to try to get ahead of those, those type of things, and not to take too much time, but the littles are very important to us, and I see the youth, the youth centers being used for the littles when the bigs are in, in classes. So again, a lot of work has to go in, a lot of public engagement. Once MAPS 4 gets approved, there's a lot of work that still has to be done, because maybe not every youth center will be exactly outfitted the same. It's not, it's not going to be a cookie cutter for the most part. We've got to look at the, the areas, we want to look at diversity, we want to look to make sure that we're providing opportunities across the spectrums for the youth centers. Just as we are trying to cover the spectrum of age at the Douglas Rec Center, it's going to be from the newborns to the 100-year-olds at the Douglas Rec Center. That's the intent of the planning there.
Something I would add for embark in parks to consider, and for anybody watching at home or here, is when I heard you talk about making sure that the kids from the surrounding schools have access to this particular recreation center, something we should all think about going into MAPS 4 was the proposed BRT line to the northeast side. When Councilperson Hammond and I took a tour of the zoo back during the summer, we left from downtown on one of our buses, and it took us down Fourth Street, right to where Douglas is, right? And then we went north on MLK out to the zoo. Almost every single stop, someone was getting on or off. It was a full bus. And I would imagine that having a BRT, considering that particular route, Fourth Street to MLK, and then out there would be a way for the kids all the way out from Millwood to be able to get to that particular facility. So that's just something that's always on my mind, because I just really want us to think about that access part of this, as we, kind of Doug's point, all the different parts of MAPS, how they can work together. So everyone just kind of think about that, whether it's embark parks or people watching.
I had one other question also concerning the Parks and Rec. Would the Oklahoma City Parks and Rec be open to a discussion with Oklahoma City Schools on using the pool for an hour or day for rental during, during swimming season? In the past, the way in which the swimming program worked with OKC that I was involved in back in the 80s was they would rent the various pools, the Y's nearside, the various near Y's YMCA pools, and have that particular use for practice- near Ys, YMCA pools, and have that particular use for practice and for that. My, my thinking was that this particular pool would probably be best used for just a practice area, not necessarily for swim meets, with only being three lanes have for that. And the other half of the pool area is starting with zero level depth up to, up to several different areas of depth. So there is kind of a way in which the pool area is kind of used for both family and then also for swimming lessons, for, for lap swimming. And then we're also looking for some possible collaboration with various school districts to use it for, for training for swimming. So would that be a possibility with Park and Rec in the future that the district could work, the school district could work with them?
Currently, the City of Oklahoma City has a memorandum of understanding with the Oklahoma City Public Schools. We get to use their assets for free, they get to use our assets for free. So this won't change. In fact, a new revised MOU will be on your city council agenda, I think, your next meeting. We have been working with the athletic director and, and the superintendent and his staff to re-craft the MOU, and it will be coming to you all within the next two city council meetings. I'm not sure whether it has gone to their board for their approval, or we'll be the first, but we have been crafting. But we have had an MOU with the school district, the Oklahoma City Public School System, for years where they get to use our assets for free, we get to use their assets for free. And again, we're just cementing that. Again, he
And then the decisions on exactly how we would program and where we might use facilities is something that we'd have to work through in terms of
Yeah, it's a matter of scheduling. With, with all the new middle schools being created and the sports being, the athletics being put into those middle schools, they are building new sports fields. Some of those are being built on our property, the city's property at the parks. So again, it's very important that this memorandum of understanding includes those opportunities so the fifth, sixth, and seventh graders, eighth graders can do their sports on their sports fields at their home fields. But like I said, they don't have enough real estate to do all of their sports fields on their properties. So that we have been working with them to put those sports fields on city property. So again, the MOU had to be strengthened and restructured so that we're all on the same page, being able, we'll be able to use their gymnasiums, they'll be able to use our sports fields.
So that's like, for example, the northeast classroom, football field area that's being worked on now, I know that's part of the city, is that something that's already been?
The football field belongs to the school district, and if they renovate it and they have times available, we will be able to put programming leagues on that field as well.
Okay.
But we, we transferred the ownership of that football field years ago.
We've gone far afield of, of this item.
Okay.
We need to wrap this up. Okay. We still are on MFA. We've got items A through H. Any other comments? If not, an entertaining motion to adopt them with one.
Got a
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We just have claims and payroll.
Got a
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we also have just claims and payroll.
Got a
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, reconvene as the council meeting, where we find ourselves on page four of the printed agenda, item seven, the consent docket. And we have, I know we have deferred item J. We have a presentation on item V. We have a presentation on item AD, a presentation on item AF. And is there any other item that a council member wants to pull out for a separate vote or discussion?
Yes, right here, I'd like to pull out item 7F. I'm going to excuse myself for that vote.
Okay.
If you don't mind. And also, I know we're introducing and setting for final hearing, but I, I want to make mention of item G, 7G1.
7G1, okay.
Wait, I'm sorry. I had that wrong. Is that right? Okay, it's on Thursday, okay.
10609?
For the historical, yes, that's what I want. Yes, ma'am.
All right, you just want to discuss that, you're saying?
Please.
Got it, okay.
Your Honor, I'd like to discuss 7Y1, please.
And also 7S.
Okay, 7Y1 and 7S, got it? Anything else for now? Okay. Why don't we take them in order? Councilwoman Nice, you want to step out for a moment? And we'll, we'll just get that done with, so it's not hanging over our heads. All right, item 7F, we would like to potentially adopt that with a separate motion.
Move back.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, moving on to, she's actually the next thing. 7G1 at 300 Northeast Third Street. Councilwoman Nice, you wanted to talk about that.
Yes, I just wanted to make mention about this because, again, we are excited about what the potential for this property is going to bring. And I hope you all were able to read what was in it. Now I'm out of breath because I was running. But I hope you all were able to read the historic significance of Mr. S.D. Lyons. And one of the things that I found most riveting is the fact that not only was this gentleman very, very rich, but as African-American, when he passed away, he was one of the richest men in Oklahoma. And also, with his products that he had, and created the rouge and powder and the makeup that he had, he was number two in the country, in line with Madam C.J. Walker, as far as products are concerned. And he sold these products all across the United States. And around that time, you would have people go door-to-door to sell your products. He did not have anyone do that. People would send in their information, and he would create that product right on his site and mail it out to whoever the consumer was. So I, again, I just, just reading this and reading the significance and importance of Mr. S.D. Lyons, I, I think and know that this story has yet to be told as far as his significance and importance, and also about him being here around the time of Oklahoma territory and the land run in Oklahoma itself. As far as the Calvary Baptist Church around that time, he owned a lot of property, and he sold that property that he had where Calvary Baptist Church is so the church could be built. So, exactly. I was just reading this like, oh, my goodness, all of this history. So again, just what's happening and the fact that this building and this home is where it is, the important significance. And I would, again, encourage everyone to just kind of read that history of Mr. S.D. Lyons. But I know I'll be bringing this and mentioning it again when it comes back to our city council for a vote. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You want to keep it rolling into item S, Councilwoman Nice?
Yes. Item S. I'm curious, we, there were some questions about the parks as far as what exactly was removed. There was a decrease. So the question was, what was decreased as far as, was it the cost of certain upgrades? Or what exactly was it that was?
Can we come back to that item? We'll try to get Doug back in here. I'd like Doug to come in and answer that one. Are you okay if we come back to that?
Not a problem.
He was trying to get some information.
All right, we'll return to that, and we'll now move on to item V, a presentation regarding a professional services agreement with Matrix Consulting Group.
Lori Johnson, our Assistant City Manager with Public Works, is going to be doing this.
Good morning. The item before you is a resolution authorizing staff to negotiate an agreement with Matrix Consulting Group. I wanted to give you a little bit of background on what brought this to you today. The, the city auditor's office audited the street construction program several years ago, and in the fall of last year issued a report on a follow-up audit. Several of the things that the Public Works Department has done to improve contracting are moving forward, but one of the things that was recommended by the city auditor's office was an external evaluation of our change order processes and the timelines that are assigned to contracts, to assure ourselves that our contracts are being completed in a timely manner. So we have done an RFP that was approved by the council in July. We received four proposals, one of which was not really adequate for consideration. Those other three proposals were evaluated by a committee, and the committee recommended Matrix Consulting Group on the basis of both their experience in auditing these types of contracts and in the type of work that they, the work plan that they proposed. We really liked that they proposed a plan that engaged the contractors as stakeholders in the discussion so that whatever recommendations are brought forward as a part of this study will already have the inherent, having been discussed with those stakeholders in the contracting process. And we thought that would make it much easier to have recommendations that could be implemented more easily. So with that, I would mention that also the period of time that they'll be reviewing is last fiscal year, fiscal year 19. And just to give you some perspective on that, we had about 69 contracts that were completed for road construction during that period for a value of about $127 million. So are there any questions?
All right. Thank you.
So Doug, again, if you want to go back to S.
Okay. Doug, you want to come up and speak now to item S?
My apologies for being delayed. Was there a specific question, Ms., Ms. Nice?
Yes, and the question is, I know there was an amendment change, a decrease in funding for this, the projects in the parks. So the question is, what specifically was decreased? I see the amounts, but what specifically was decreased from, from the parks?
In, in Ward 7, Diggs Park, we, we reduced the amount of walkway to 3/10 of a mile because what had been designed by the consultants wouldn't fit. The new playground, including slides and, and styled playground and swings, we, originally the design firm designed additional play features in that playground, but when the bids came in, we couldn't afford all of the elements, but it got new playground equipment at Diggs. We anticipated being able to, again, the estimates that came in from the design firm thought that we could afford two shelters at, at that park. We were unable to do two shelters, so it was reduced to one. We thought we could do more than one basketball court, but again, the bids came in high, so we reduced it from multiple basketball courts down to one. And again, benches and things along those lines. In Burton Park, again, larger playgrounds were designed, bids came in. It's the same story in, in Burton and Glen Allen and Phillips. When the design consultants did their work and estimated what they thought we could afford to purchase, once we bid and got the bids in, we had to reduce what was down to what we could afford to do. Playground sizes had to be limit, reduced but not eliminated. We did get play elements in there. If you need a specific cost per, I will have to do some additional work to get you what the, the, the value of that shelter was at Diggs or, or what the value of those play elements. But what was intended in the 2000 GEO bond was accomplished, it's just that our, our design team thought we could get more than what the contractors were willing to, to give us for the prices that we had available, so we had to reduce those. In some cases, we actually added elements in, I'd have to get those, where something might have been reduced at one park, but more money was spent at an additional park to, to accomplish some of the other goals to be accomplished. But that, that's the, the gist. Prices came in, we couldn't afford what we had designed, so we had to do, we awarded the contract, but then we had to do an immediate change order to fit it within the construction dollars that we actually had.
When did the bids go out for these parks?
I'll have to dig that one up. It was last year because this is, we're coming to the finalization of some of these projects. Most of these were done, started last year or earlier this spring.
I guess my concern is the fact that we're looking at 2007 GEO bond money being spent in 2019, and I know that's not uncommon, but the fact remains, as you said, here we are, when you go to 2007 GEO bond, though those projects are, are based on amounts around that time, and here you are, over 10 years later, getting to the projects, and then you're cut drastically by being able to put those features into your parks. So that's, that's a grave concern that I have when it comes to especially looking at the amount of decrease for each one of these parks.
Yes, ma'am.
But I would like that list. Thank you.
Eric Winger, Public Works, this is a, a comment. As we work on finishing the 2007 bond issue, there was a lot of planning in '07 that did not take the same level of planning that was done in 2017, the most recent bond issue that we passed. It is recognized that the 2007 bond issue did not include for every project inflation adjustments. That was done in the 2017, so we're not expecting that same to occur with the most recent bond issue. Just the ability to, to plan better, to create project budgets that don't rely on the timing of which they're constructed. That way, projects in the '17 bond issue, even if they come late in the bond issue, will have the same benefit of budget with inflation included than the 2007 did not. So I believe we've made that correction going forward, but that is exactly the case. We are finding that some of the budgets are very limited, that were originally contemplated in 2007 and trying to build those projects in current day, so.
And, and just one more comment, because I think it's unfortunate, because these are some of your smaller parks that probably need the most upgrades, and here they are, they're not going to get those because of, of what has taken place. So that, that's just a concern.
Doug, on that, I had reached out to you about this particular item as well. You had replied back saying that the Burton Park here is known as Burton-Britten, and that the Britton Park in Ward 2, this didn't include that, but in the item, it says Britton, comma, then Burton slash Britton. I'm just curious what's going on there.
One, one of our parks is right on the dividing line between 7 and 2, and the work might have been done on the 7 side of, of that park. I'd have to go back and really look at the map as it relates to that, but, but the Burton that is identified is in the Ward 7. It's, it's not the Britton-Burton Park. It's just the Burton.
Well, is there anything that's going to happen to the Britton Park? Because like, there's, I guess when I'm reading this, it says Britton, comma, and then Burton slash Britton, so it's like two different items. That comma tells me that's two different things, right? Britton and then Burton-Britten.
Correct.
And there's a Brit.
There, there was a, a small change in Britton. I'll have to, I, I would have to research what that, what, you might have actually increased
Okay.
rather than been reduced. I'll have to go back and look and see what actually happened in Britton. But again, it, it would be to accomplish what was set out in the proposition in 2007, we might have had to add money to the Britton project, or it might be in the same situation that the playground we wanted to put in Britton or the walkway, the playground was too extravagant, but the playground was built. Everything got accomplished that the 2007 proposition had for these parks. It just, the elaborateness or the possibility of extra that was designed in because the consultants thought we could afford it had to be taken out.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at that as he said that, and I'm looking at Burton-Britten in the two decreases, and I'm looking at over 30, actually $67,000 that was taken from the parks. That's, that's a lot of money when you're looking at that. But I mean, you say it's small, but I don't think that's small.
Okay, all right. Any further questions on that item? Item 7Y1, Councilman Stenssifer, you wanted to speak to that?
Thank you, Your Honor. Some road, in our, in our role as counselors, we receive calls and emails and see people at HOA meetings, and some roads are known to me better than others. And I am so happy to see the approval of Project PC 0659 through better streets and also through the 2017 general obligation bond, which will resurface northwest 122nd between Rockwell Avenue and Portland, and then also Avenue and Portland, and then also a resurfacing of North MacArthur Boulevard from 122nd to West Memorial. Those are, both roads I receive a lot of calls on. I'm happy to see we're approving it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7AD, Joint Resolution with the Oklahoma City Airport Trust, we have a presentation.
Yes, Angela Pierce is here with us this morning. She's Assistant Finance Director and Debt Manager for the city. This is on a refunding that we're doing. It's like a refinance on airport bonds, and just wanted to give her, have her give just an update on what we're gaining with this.
Good morning. Thank you. This agenda item is seeking approval for the joint resolution with the airports trust. In 2013, we went out to the market, we sold some bonds in order to construct the rental car facility that is at the airports today. We're looking to refund these bonds based on favorable market conditions. The savings are pretty good. We're looking at around 27% savings on the original issue, which is about eight to nine million dollars. And that comes out to about $500,000 a year savings debt service to the airport trust. And we're going to be going out to the market for these in December of this year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Greenough?
How much flexibility do we have in terms of the date that we get these refinanced? You say in December, and the feds expect it to lower their rates soon. So, I'm just wondering, how much flexibility do we have? Can we go from December 1st to January 15th before we make that decision?
We do have that flexibility, yes, and that's something that we're monitoring really closely with our financing team.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 7AF, there's a presentation here.
Yes, on 7AF, we have a budget amendment, and our Budget Director and Assistant Finance Director Doug Dowler is here to introduce this item.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Doug Dowler from the Finance Department. This is the Second Amendment to our budget this current year. This is an increase of about $3.5 million. It brings our overall budget to $1,573,286,398. The first change is to our Fleet Services Internal Service Fund. They've determined a need to upgrade their shop from using evaporative coolers to air conditioning. Project will cost about $176,000, and they'll use fund balance left over from the prior year. That will leave the fund with about a 10% in unbudgeted reserve, which is within the range spelled out in our financial policies. The second change is the fund where we manage the business improvement districts. We have the addition of the Uptown 23rd District, or bid, for about $97,000. And the second generation of the Capitol Hill bid is also being included here, and that adds about $69,000. Both of those additions are funded by assessments from property owners in the respective districts. The final change is the largest one at $3,150,000, and that's to the Police Sales Tax Fund for several projects. Police is planning to use fund balance for these projects, which will leave them with an unbudgeted operating reserve of 22.7%, which is above the level required by our financial policies. This change will also require an amendment to the Police Sales Tax Resolution that spells out what expenditures are authorized in the sales tax fund. That item is being introduced later in the agenda, and Chief Gurley is here as well, and he's going to speak about the projects a little bit that are included in the amendment and also in the resolution.
Thank you, Chief Gurley, with the Police Department. This amendment's going to provide funding for three separate capital and non-capital improvements to police facilities. The first is the police aviation facility. It's being moved in a new facility constructed over near the Southwest Division, which is very near the airport property at Southwest 54th and Portland. This, there was 2017 Geo bond funding for this construction, but as we got into the construction and looking at the costs of that, there were some things that weren't included originally, so the increase in cost was $800,000, and that's, that's part of this. The second is an improvement to the public safety campus, which includes the demolition of the old police headquarters and the court complex. With those also included is the construction of a new parking lot, and the parking lot funding is what's part of this amendment as well, which is 1.6 million. The third project is to the police building we have at 616 Coalcore Drive, which houses a few of our specialized units. It contains a number of sections, including the permits and IDs, DNA lab, and the CSI offices, firearms and ballistic labs, professional standards, photo lab, and our computer forensics. Various improvements, expansion of offices and lab spaces are necessary. The projected cost is estimated at $750,000, with again, funding being provided by the Police Sales Tax Fund. There's any questions about any of those three projects?
Chief, what's the timing in terms of relocating the police aviation or helicopter pad currently out to the Southwest Station?
We're, we're looking at targeting, you know, somewhere late summer, early fall of 2020. We've had a couple of delays come up with some FAA approval that's required out of that. I don't think it's going to be any issue, it's just delaying the project a little bit.
And the fenced-in area of the Southwest Station, is it, the helicopter pad going to be west of it, south of it, on the actual site, the fenced-in site?
The, the hangar will, will actually occupy just an area to the south and east of Southwest Station. It kind of sits at an angle, and it'll, and it'll, it'll kind of angle off of that, so it'll be basically on that property, pretty much where Southwest is sitting now. The, the actual pad and the approach pad will be out on airport property, further to the south and the west a little bit.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So, for the, the second with the, the parking lot, how many spaces is that estimated to get us?
I don't remember the spaces on that. Actually, I had a meeting scheduled to look at the design of the actual parking lot because it changed now that we're keeping the, the smokestack in the old jail facility, and we had to reschedule that meeting, so I don't have a number on the spaces.
Okay. I'd like to see that whenever we have it. And so, I just want to clarify, so the First Amendment, I'm seeing, I'm seeing it's a similar situation with the parks where the Geo bond funds were not sufficient, but I'm, essentially what I'm hearing is that you all have the money to supplement a project rather than having to cut things.
That's correct.
Okay. And we don't have that opportunity with parks?
This is in the Dedicated Police Sales Tax Fund, the, the three-quarter cent sales tax that is split between police and fire, and so it has to be used for police services only.
Okay.
That's where we have a dedicated fund.
Right. Okay. Okay.
One more question, Chief. Sorry about that.
No problem.
And someone else may have to address it. So, what's going to happen to the property currently at the old downtown airpark once you all relocate to the Southwest Division? Is that going to come up for sale?
Eric Winger, our Public Works Director.
Eric Winger, Public Works Director. So, there is actually a lease that the city is leasing that currently from, I believe, the Wheeler District.
Okay.
So, that lease is set to expire. We're needing to move as quickly as we can on this, so once relocated, then that lease will be fulfilled and the property no longer used as a hangar.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on this item?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right. That concludes all the items that people wanted to speak to or that we had presentations scheduled for. So, we entertain a motion? All right. Got a motion and a second to move the items, except for the one previously deferred and the one previously approved. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Okay. Moving on to the concurrence docket, where we, item eight, where we have items A through H, we could take with one motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. And now, we find ourselves on page 15 of your printed agenda, item nine, items requiring separate votes. A, our ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval at the Planning Commission. We have A1 at 3915, 3919, and 3923, North Pennsylvania Avenue going from C3 to R4. Councilman Cooper.
Yes, thank you. Has anyone signed up to speak, or is the applicant present? Oh, yeah. Which one? Okay.
Hi, my name is Elisa Weatherman. I'm the architect for the owners. I'm, on behalf of Christina Fallon and Omar. I'm here to answer any questions. Basically, we're just asking to take the existing office buildings from commercial to residential so that we can create them into apartments. And, so if you have any questions.
I spoke with Ms. Fallon on the phone. Tell her thank you again for her time. Also, when I spoke with her, it took until after the phone call before I, I only knew Christina. I did not realize the Fallon part until after it was over, so. But I really appreciate her, her time in that. And I'm excited about this because, as you all, many of you know, is that after the Pride Parade next June, there will be a street enhancement, placemaking project that occurs right north of them at 39th Street.
Great.
And the idea of having housing right there where people can live next to what we're creating as a walkable, bike-friendly area, then I, I just think it's really good to see the private sector kind of acknowledging, hey, you know, let's take a chance on some of these infrastructure improvements from the public sector, too.
We're excited about it.
So, thank you for that, and I move approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9A2 at 630 West Hefner Road going from I1 to I2. Councilwoman Nice?
Thank you. Has anyone signed up to speak? All right. With this, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9A3 at 10701 North Council Road going from PUD 763 to C3 and R2. Councilman Greiner?
Yeah, I think this is compatible with the area. Had Planning Commission unanimous approval. Anybody sign up? I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9A4, 3131 Northwest 192nd Street going from R1 to O1. Councilman Stenssifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you said, this is, or it's on final hearing. There, it's for future office development. There were no protesters, there are no protesters here today, so I'd move for approval, please.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9A5 going from, I'm sorry, at 400 East I240 going from SPUD 78, I1, and R1 to I2. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor Francis. Has anyone signed up to speak? Thank you. This item was approved by the Planning Commission with no protests. I'd move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9A6 at 3717 North Meridian going from R1 to O2. Councilman Greiner?
The same, compatible with the surrounding uses. Planning Commission recommended approval, and I will also.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9A7, 1007 through 1017 Northwest 10th and 1010 through 1020 West Park Place going from R4 and C4 to DTD1. Councilwoman Hannah?
Yes, I see the applicant is present. Can you come up and just speak to what, what this project is and, and see if we have any questions?
Morning. Ian Colgan, Assistant Executive Director with the Oklahoma City Housing Authority. This site is a project we are working on to, for the redevelopment and relocation of a property we own at Nathan Robinson called Towers Apartments. We, those, those apartments, we feel are in need of a holistic replacement and redevelopment, and we've been looking for alternative sites in the downtown area to relocate the senior residents who, who live there. The project as conceived on this site will relocate the 138 units, add approximately 20 to 30 additional independent units, and add 140-unit assisted living facility together for about a 320-unit affordable senior development that integrates both independent and assisted living for senior healthcare for low-income seniors.
Well, thank you for that. I'm, I'm excited to see this location and bringing it into what I understand is the the D2D or DTD district, so with that, I'll move for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9A8 at 3101 Northwest 150th Street going from R4 and CUP 36 to PUD 1726. Councilman Stenssifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's an ordinance on final hearing. It's to permit residential development. It was approved by planning. There were no protesters. I'm not aware of any today.
The applicant is available for questions. I don't know that they need to speak if they don't. Okay.
I'd move for approval.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9A9 at 615 Northeast 5th Street going from R2 to SPUD 1085. Councilwoman Nice?
Has anyone signed up to speak? Nope. With that, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9A10 was deferred at the beginning of the meeting, and so that brings us to 9A11. This is at 301 Northeast 13th going from R3 to SPUD 1138. This was deferred September 24th, October 8th, and the 22nd. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I know the applicant is present, but I do know we have some opposition to this project, so with that, I know, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, I guess Amy Ayers, I don't know if that's a protester. Should we hear, typically, we hear from the applicant first.
Well, I mean, we've heard from the applicant quite a few weeks, but if you want to come up and tell us what this is once more?
I don't know that he's ever actually made the presentation. I think he's always been deferred.
They actually have.
Okay. I don't remember.
Good morning. David Box, 522 Coalcore Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an SPUD that would allow for an office building to be built along Northeast 13th Street between Lincoln and Walnut. I want to start by saying this was an application that we worked with staff extensively prior to Planning Commission. Ultimately, the planning staff recommended approval, and we went to Planning Commission, and at the time of Planning Commission, there was no protest, and Planning Commission did recommend approval of this item, and so it does come to you with a, a recommendation for approval. One of the things that I think is important to note is, you know, this, this area, we, there's going to be a lot of discussion in the upcoming months and in years about the innovation district. And here we have a project where we have an applicant and a property owner that is wanting to do what I believe to be a project compatible with the area, doing so with all of his own capital. You know, this will not be at all a, a public project. When you think of 13th Street, most of it is zoned residential. I would submit that I think it's obvious if you have driven that area or if you're familiar with the area, that the, the idea that it's going to continue to be residential is probably incorrect. It is more likely an area in transition from residential to something more intense, perhaps office, perhaps commercial, but, but not residential front there on 13th. 13th is a major interceptor between the east part of the city and downtown over 235. So, what I've handed out are a couple exhibits. I'd like to start with the, the staff report, and on the first page, I've highlighted a few things. This is an area of the city in which is classified as urban medium in the comp plan. Why I believe that's important is, what the staff tells us about urban medium is, developments are expected to be larger in scale and have greater intensity and mixture of uses than developments found in UL or urban low. So, what the comp plan is calling for here is something more intense, something of greater density than what we would typically see as we get further out into the city. And so, that project that we are proposing is certainly in line with that. As we move through the staff report, this is, is an interesting project. If you go to page two of the staff report, the site to our, our east, which is the Oklahoma Dental Association, is zoned O2 general office. One of the things we, we tossed around amongst our group was, should we just zone it O2? O2, when you look at the code standard, as I've highlighted, it allows for six stories if you are more than 75 feet from an R1 or R3 property. Let me get one more. Why I believe that's important is what the staff tells us about urban medium is developments are expected to be larger in scale and have greater intensity and mixture of uses than developments found in UL or urban low. So, what the comp plan is calling for here is something more intense, something of greater density than what we would typically see as we get further out into the city. And so, that project that we are proposing is certainly in line with that. As we move through the staff report, this is an interesting project. If you go to page two of the staff report, the site to our east, which is the Oklahoma Dental Association, is zoned O-2 general office. One of the things we tossed around amongst our group was, should we just zone it O-2? O-2, when you look at the code standard, as I've highlighted, it allows for six stories if you are more than 75 feet from an R-1 or R-3 property. Let me get one more. So, when you look at the subject property to the north, although it's zoned R-1, the lots are vacant. There are no structures on it. When you look to our east, it is zoned O-2. When you look to the west, it is a residentially zoned property, so that is the only trigger in the code that would prevent us from going six stories. Now, what we're proposing is four stories with a rooftop. Okay? The irony in this is the image you see before you that says residence under construction, that is my client's property. So, the only protections that exist in the code are here to protect the individual that is standing before you asking for this application. But for him building his own personal residence next to this site, we could go taller than what we propose. And then, as we move through the staff report, if you look to, if you look to the staff's comments on planned conformance at page 13, it says, "The proposal is in conformance with the priorities for the urban medium Luda that includes infill developments on vacant lots and rehabilitation of underutilized properties." Now, height is going to be something that I think is going to become a focal point, and so I want to focus on how staff dealt with the height. If you look at page 14, under the technical evaluation, staff recommends approval, and when it comes to height, they deal with that at technical evaluation number two. And what they say is, "A maximum building height of 70 feet is permitted if the building is placed at least 50 feet from the rear property line. Otherwise, the building height is limited to two stories and 35 feet." So, what this exhibit shows you is, we are actually 94 feet from the rear property line. So, staff said the height we propose is acceptable at 50 feet. We are at 94 feet. To further provide a buffer, there's a 20-foot alley. And so, the protection from the lots to the north, which again are vacant, we are actually 114 feet away from those property lines. So, we are more than double what staff has suggested would be a good objective criteria as to how to limit height. So, one of the things that I wanted to show through this series of four exhibits, which are all meant to be read together, when you look at the protest petition which came in late yesterday, there is discussion about how there's nothing like this in the area and it's too tall. And so, what I had the architects do is, you know, for a couple blocks stretched there along 13th, go see what heights exist. And so, if you'll permit me, as we look, on top is the north side of 13th moving to the east, and then, you know, we have the south side of 13th Street moving to the west. And what you see is a series of buildings. You have the OU Health Center at 90 feet, and OU, the new tower being built at 166, excuse me, 168 feet, and 110 feet. And so, when you look at this stretch of 13th Street in total, it is, our project is in conformance, I think, with the general height. In fact, it is the smallest of all of the new buildings that are being built. Perhaps that's because of the comp plan, and perhaps that's because of the fact that we're trying to prioritize urban infill developments. You can look before you in the exhibits. It goes through why we need the height we need. You'll see that the first floor is nothing more than an elevator lobby and a stairwell. One of the things staff said was important is to make sure this is an urban-style development. The only way to do that is to, you know, pull that building to the street, allow for the parking to be behind it. And so, we've done that. And the only way to do that is you essentially lose a first floor. So, what we really have is three occupied floors with a rooftop. At Planning Commission, there was discussion about the rooftop, and there was a technical evaluation added at that time to make sure that we built a wall so that there would be no visual line of sight or noise that would go to the north. And so, we had agreed to do that. There will be a screening wall that would be built on that rooftop patio. When you think of this stretch of 13th Street, it provides for fantastic lines of sight to the downtown skyline. And so, there is a desire for the people that will office here to be able to enjoy those lines of sight. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I understand that this is perhaps taller than the things that exist now, but I urge you to consider the fact that O-2 zoning would allow us to go taller, but for my client deciding to put forth significant money to build his own personal residence. And I would submit objectively that I'm not sure what basis could be put forward to justify a denial of this case based upon what exists along 13th and the comprehensive plan urging taller, more intense, more dense developments than we've seen in the past. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Greenwell.
David, at this point, what type of offices or what types of businesses will this office accommodate?
Yes, it would be an office, things, you know, oil and gas, or there could be lawyers, accountants, but a general office-type product.
Thank you.
Is the building already occupied for tenants?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you ready for tenants?
Yes, ma'am.
To be full, or how?
Yeah, I believe so. The individual that is building the home is going to, this is going to be his office.
He's going to walk over to his office?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That, I want to, go ahead. Are there any more concerns or questions?
First, David.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
A couple things I want to point out before, you can keep that up, please. Couple things I want to point out before I have the concerned citizens speak. As he pointed out, page 13, with B, I also want you to see what that second sentence that is not underlined, "However, the proposed project intensity next to residential use triggers potential compatibility issues relating to building height and operational impacts." I also want you to pay attention to what we're looking at when it comes to this corner right here on 13th and Lincoln. When you're looking at 13th and Lincoln from Lincoln all the way to where the Call Court Building is on Walnut, that's what I ask you to pay attention to. As you see those building heights, the Dental Association Building is approximately 32 feet. Am I right? Okay. Or the OCPA is 32 feet. So, we're looking at next to that, the Dental Association Building being 18 feet. Okay. We're looking at homes that are, have been implemented and have been in that neighborhood for many years. None of them are over 50 feet tall. We have two residences at 32. This new one that's coming in, that's not even compatible with this building, is 29. We have 49 for the Wal Court. So, again, this is a corner and area that I'm asking you to pay attention to because that's the area that's going to be most affected by what this is going to bring. With that, even across the street, the apartments look directly on, across the street, cattacornered from where this building is going to be placed, and it is not over 23 feet. And we're asking for a 70-foot-tall building to be placed in the middle of a residence on the edge on 13th Street? There's a grave concern. And for those buildings, I'm looking at the, these buildings, again, though, the public, what is it? OCPA, thank you, and also the Dental Association Building. Those buildings have not been there long, and as we understand, they are also O-2. So, they had the opportunity to go 70 feet, just as much as this one does, but they respected the community and not, decided not to do that. They decided to keep it residential and also looking like a neighborhood in the neighborhood that exists currently in that community. And one of the other concerns that I have is the fact that, talking to some of the residents, there is no neighborhood overlay. And when you don't have an overlay in your community that they have asked for, this is what you get. You get things like this where there is no overlay, so therefore, you can have this type of development that decides, oh, we want 70 feet. We want a 70-foot-tall building to come into this community. So, with that, I'm going to ask for the residents to come and speak, and before I do that, I did have something else here. This was delivered to my office on yesterday, and I have four full sheets of that whole neighborhood, which is three blocks long, that oppose this development. And I'm going to side with the community on this because this is a grave concern when you have a building that is 70 feet tall. And trust me, I am for economic development. I love it, and I know it needs to happen in our communities. But when you have a building that's 70 feet tall encroaching upon this neighborhood, and even though, even though there is a possibility of having this rooftop and looking, looking at this beautiful, beautiful view of Oklahoma City, you're also looking over this neighborhood. So, I think those are things we definitely need to take in consideration when we're looking at what this looks like as far as a 70-foot-tall building. And I did ask for the developer to consider this building to be lowered to at least 50, 50 feet. And they went to 58, and I compromised and said we would, this 50 would be sufficient, and now we're at 70 again. So, again, to me, in my opinion, that's no concern for the community when we're looking at what this development wants to bring. So, with that, I know we had someone signed up to speak. Ms., would you please come?
Amy Ayers.
Hello, Mayor Holt and City Councilmen and Women. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I do not have all of this in front of me, and I have some emotion to bring. The community of Clasens North Island Park comes before you today to express opposition to the proposed rezoning as related to Spud 1138. Our neighborhood submitted a petition to Councilwoman yesterday to this effect. Our community of about 80 occupied homes in a tiny six-square blocks generated 59 signatures forming our collective voice. My name is Amy Ayers. I'm a homeowner at 317 Northeast 14th Street since May of 2017. My property is just north of this proposed project. I'm joined by Ms. Holmes McKnight of Northeast 15th Street, a longtime resident of our neighborhood and president of our association, along with other members of our community. The community members whose signatures make up this petition base our objection on the fact that the proposed development does not match our small, quaint community, a feature which brought many of the new neighbors to this area, including myself. Allowing a building of this nature will set a precedent for future development of similar design, further destroying the very fabric of what makes our neighborhood unique. The height of this structure far exceeds any others in this community and will stand out as an obstruction and impact future development for those of us on the street directly behind Northeast 14th Street. For me personally and for other neighbors, the proposed structure would eliminate our downtown view, something we take pride in. The gentleman indicated that the residents of this building would have a nice downtown view, but that in turn blocks our view as homeowners. Allowing a building, I'm sorry, for the past three-plus years, our neighborhood has gone through and continues to experience tremendous growth. We were fortunate to be part of the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, beginning with the installment of new sidewalks, trees, and a park, all of which led to new home construction and increased remodeling of older homes. We've added 20-plus new families to our community as a result. Our neighbors, including my wife and me, chose this area for what it looks like now, rows of homes without large buildings sprinkled in. The quiet, quaint charm of our small but mighty neighborhood is something that we fiercely hope to maintain. I currently serve in administration at Oklahoma City University on 23rd Street, so I understand what it means to be a good neighbor to the residential folks around you. We work very hard at OCU to always consider the residential community that surrounds us. Now, I'm the resident who is seeking support and simply hope that the same courtesy can be extended here. With all due respect, to compare this building to the OU Medical Community is by far unfair. There is a significant distance between. I thank you for your consideration of our concerns. We, the residents of Clasens North Island Park, graciously urge your protection, your project, I'm sorry, your rejection of this proposal. Thank you, and I apologize for my quivering voice.
Thank you. We also have Michael Washington has signed up to speak.
What is this crap here? This trash. You heard me? You want to come and put all your big dollars in a community to heck with what these people think? Well, sir, ain't nobody going for that crap. Oh, by the way, I'm moving in now so I can just walk straight across to, maybe hopscotch to my new building, which we are going to determine to be, needed to be 70 feet high? Really? Who are you talking to, man? Now then, as the lady just spoke so eloquently, they moved into a community where they love the views that they're getting downtown or whatever, northeast, west, south, of which they may decide to period. Isn't that interesting then? Now then, you have a man here who wants to come in, and for the most part, after negotiations were had, sir, I find that very offensive for you to be talking about 58 feet and suddenly say, well, I'm going to throw it in your face, Councilwoman, now, since you didn't want to go to 58 and you discerned 50, now we're going to go back up to 70? Let's look at the hidden motives here. In other words, we think we cannot do you. We think we not got rule the citizens of northeast side of Oklahoma City. Well, sir, let me tell you something. I am for every person having a right to their own economic adventures, enterprises and so forth and so on, but I'm totally against anyone disregarding the faith and trust of people who themselves have bought properties long before this new adventure is coming into the community. Wait a minute here. Why does it have to be so high? Is it to let it know, oh, I'm the new Don Dada, I'm moving into this part of the region of the northeast side? Is that what it's for? Why could it not be when you're basically getting what you want other than just maybe a few feet downward? Now, I myself am a political activist on the northeast side and viewing this area long before this point came up. I don't see any other buildings and things of this nature in that particular area. Now, again, he's bringing up other buildings, but have we also forgotten the fact that some of these buildings that may be so high have been grandfathered in? That doesn't mean he can come in now because he have a law firm who does this kind of thing can come in. Well, now, we can disregard what the people think. We can come in and say, oh, well, I can wake up tomorrow and then drink my beer or eat my potato chips or my popcorn or cookies, knowing that I got what I want. Now, are you ready for this? This is going to also establish another precedent for other buildings like this to come in. Why? Oh, you gave it to Harry. Why you going to stop me now? See, that's the whole point. Huh? It starts a process that needs to begin before it's got good. Let me say in closing, I for one am against this. And if necessary to the people and the lady that just spoke, it's not over yet because we can file a lawsuit on that. I love filing them. Yes, indeed, I do, I, because that's the First Amendment right and I have the United States Constitution and the Fourteenth Amendment, due process of law. Thank you very much. No, sir. Out.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nice, that's all the people who've signed up.
Thank you. Did you have any other?
Just briefly, I, you did make a great point. I mean, I didn't talk about the mitigation measures that are triggered in the comp plan, but I want to point out that that is handled through staff's request that we be 50 feet off to go to the 70 feet. So, staff dealt with that trigger by requiring TE2, and so, in their mind, if we were 50 feet off, we could go to 70 feet. And again, we are 114 feet off, so well more than double what staff believed objectively to be appropriate.
Thank you. Again, the concern still stands with that second sentence after it's underlined on page 13. Also, on page one, as you see there, number two, otherwise building height is limited to two stories and 35 feet between. So, there are concerns. And again, when you have, if I'm not mistaken, 59 residents out of 80 saying this is a concern for their community, and this will set precedent for future similar development, further destroying the very fabric of what makes this neighborhood unique. And again, the height of this structure exceeds any others in the community, especially in their neighborhood, and will stand out as an obstruction in eyesore. Those are the things that I'm looking at when it comes to this community. And again, as you all have this packet and you look at what this looks like, I ask you to look at, again, the couple of pages, the last few pages. As you see, how As you see how tall this building is next to this home that the developer owns to walk right over to his business. And this, again, not one building on that whole block is over 40, 49 square feet, 49 feet. And this one is going to 70. And all we asked was that they go to 50.
Councilperson?
Yes.
Sorry, I only have one question. I appreciate hearing everyone's perspectives. During the planning process, was there any particular reason why the neighbors within that 300 feet of this development didn't bring forth those petitions in their voice then? Or I just don't know what happened?
One of the main reasons is because they did not know what was being done. They received a notice, but, go ahead. Please come forward.
If you'd state your name and address.
Good morning. Home Alita McNight, 317 Northeast 15th, and I also own land on Northeast 13th Street along with my sister. At the beginning, we were not aware that this was coming up. When I owned land on 13th Street, the Dental Association was very open, came to us. We showed us their design. They had two designs of what they wanted to do, one if they had three lots and one if they had four lots. And so we sold them their fourth lot, and this is what they built. Across the street, if you had east, they bought, there were homes there on 13th Street. I can't, I was unable to see which one it is. But if you had east, right across the street from the Dental Association, they too are in the neighborhood. It had two or three houses there. That particular business bought the whole lot, and it took into consideration the neighborhood, and they don't have a tall building. If you go across Lincoln, right before you get to Lincoln, there's another building that was there, and that was just built. And these buildings are built within the last five to 10 years. None of them is like this, and they made themselves aware to us, especially the Dental Association, what they were building, how high was it, it was, and they made themselves known. And we sold them our lot, knowing what they were going to build there. We did not know what was going to be built at the particular point now. We've never seen anything. One of our residents had heard that they were building this tall building and came to us and let us know what was being built there because he had came downtown, and that's how we found out about it.
Good morning. My name is Maggie Green. I too am a owner of lots on 13th, just next door to the residences being built, and I was instrumental in ensuring the Oklahoma Dental Association had our property from my daddy to make sure that the Dental Association had what they needed in the community. So we're very progressive in our thinking to ensure Oklahoma City moves forward, but not at the expense of the community and the neighborhood that's there today. And this would greatly impede the enjoyment of the families that live there, and we ask, I would ask that you vote to reject this proposal so they can go back and present something that would be presentable to the community, such as the Oklahoma Dental Association did to us many years ago when we sold them my father's property to move forward and progress the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. So with that, again, my concern is the height of this building. What you also see as in front of you, and I believe they have two lots. Is that correct? There, these are, this is two lots?
Yes, ma'am. And that's, that's one of the reasons that the Dental Association had the, we're about the same square footage. They had the benefit of having a, a large suburban-style lot, and, you know, we, we don't. And so to get the same square footage, it meant verticality.
And that's, that's the concern because these are two, two lots, and these lots are not big lots. And I've driven down this road quite a few times during this process to imagine and ensure and see what this would look like. And again, that is a concern, especially to understand now that the neighbors were unaware and not informed about what was coming to their community. And I, I think that's where we have to start by being good neighbors, informing those of, in that neighborhood. And I mean, some, some people, you don't have to do that, but I think in good faith, that's something we should, we should do, especially when you're building, wanting and desiring to put a building that's 70 feet tall smack dab on the street of a community. I think it's important to inform them of those efforts. So I'm done talking about it, and with that, I actually move to deny this request.
All right, we have a motion and a second for denial. Discussion?
Oh, no, no discussion, just application in terms of the votes. So if we support councilperson, I would vote.
Green.
Green. Okay.
Correct. I just have, I, I think that denying it is not a very good decision based solely on if, if they take, if they, they take this denial to district court, I don't know, I don't understand what our legal argument is gonna be to support us denying it. And I mean, I totally understand the, I totally understand the neighbors. If I lived there, I probably wouldn't like it either, and I wouldn't want that to be there. But me just not wanting it isn't a good legal argument. And I, I think we're putting our, I think we're putting our legal staff in a pretty tough position.
And let me say this, it's not, again, I'm not against economic development, but the fact remains, when I asked them to compromise, they said they didn't want to do that in the, in the footage that we asked. And now, here we are for them to go for the full 70 feet. And in my opinion, that's very disrespectful to the community and, and even the concerns of this area. That's, that's where I feel this connect and the conversation ended. And as a councilperson for the residents that live within them, it is my right to, to defend what they're asking. That's, that's why I have this position of saying, "Look, we asked them to consider looking at this and consider the community that is in this area." And they obviously decided that's not something that they want to do, but yet we have someone putting their residents next door.
Well, I, I understand your feelings on that, but again, I don't think that that's a good legal argument that we're gonna be able to make.
And, Mr., what, Mr. Jordan, what are, what are our, our consequences when it comes to this conversation? I'm asking.
Yeah, I know, and I'm gonna say one thing, and that is, we are making a record that could end up in the district court, so I would caution everyone on their comments.
I would just say that we didn't have a protest before, so now we have three witnesses to put on in court when it goes to court. So zoning cases are really kind of different. They, they don't depend solely on the law. The standard is whether the denial's unreasonable, arbitrary, and capricious. And as you can imagine, that's gonna depend on the facts of the case and how the judge, specific judge you get reviews, views of the facts. So it will depend on which judge we get and whether or not that judge agrees with the protestant, going in and out, protestants or with the applicant. So I mean, in terms of just the staff report, yes, we don't have a, we don't have a planner who can testify for us, but we have people who don't want it. So at least, at least we can put those folks on and see what the judge thinks.
Okay.
And with this process, that's something that we should be able to do. That's why we're here, for our communities, and that's what I'm fighting for right now. So that's why I'm asking that we defer, not defer, I'm sorry, we deny this zoning request. And again, consider what is on that page of 13. The proposed project intensity next to the residential triggers potential compatibility issues. This already triggers issues with him having his residents right next door to it.
So, just a quick comment. Right where you stop at, it says that planned conformance could be strengthened by specifying that to achieve the 70-foot height, the building would be placed at least 50 feet away, which is, I mean, what he keeps saying is they're 120 feet away.
120 feet away, 70 feet away, it still overpowers this community. And that's, that's what-
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying that it doesn't overpower it. I'm just trying to make sure that you're right. He didn't read that next sentence, but then also you didn't read the next sentence.
Well, there's other concerns that are in, in this plan. And again, number two, as far as that background, talking about the height being limited to two stories and 35 feet. So there were concerns as far as height is concerned with this building, with this structure. So even though this is, because you're able to do these types of spuds, here you are with these types of consequences. And that's, that's the unfortunate piece when we're looking at spuds and puds and how this affects communities. So that's, that's the reason why I'm really asking for us to deny this based on this spud.
So I'm, I'm just, I'll be upfront, I'm not gonna vote for denial on this thing. The whole, to me, this whole thing is very troubling, just in the way it's been handled. I mean, it's been deferred for a month, and it seemed like there was some negotiations, then there wasn't negotiations. There hasn't been protesters for over a month, and then all of a sudden, today, there's protesters. And it's, and I'm glad that people do come up and share their opinion. I mean, that's a, that's a huge basis. I just don't know that this thing's been fleshed out yet. And I do hate to see us end up in district court again with staff if there's something here that could still be fleshed out.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments or questions?
Would the applicant be willing to continue a conversation for a lighter, to lessen the height of this building? That is the concern of this community, and that is my concern when it comes to this height of this building.
I, I understand. And it's not that they don't want to. They, they spent money with engineers and architects to see if it could be designed at the 50 feet, and it just, it's simply not, not feasible.
Because I do not want to see a 70-foot building placed on this area where, again, the community has asked for it not to be that high.
I, I understand.
Where did the 58 figure come from?
It was if we could figure out a way to get another lot, we could find a way to get 58, but there's just no way to do it on this lot, and there's no way to do it at 50 feet.
Yeah, what does that mean? As far as, what, what are you saying? Because they own two lots.
So we would need another lot to make-
And I get that. I get that part, owning another lot. So you could have taken this home and, and turned that into another lot for, for this piece of property.
Understood, but he wants, he wants to, to build his residence there.
And again, this is, this is a concern, especially for this community, encroaching on this community, and there's no overlay present. And with the Strong Neighborhood Initiative that was in place, that also brought in homes that didn't really reflect the neighborhood because there was not an overlay present. And now here we are, encroaching with a 70-foot building because there is no overlay present, and that does not protect the residents that are within that area. And that's something that they've asked for many, many years ago. And now here we are, encroaching again with this development and allowing for people to just come in and do what they want to, to this neighborhood. And that's not what we've asked for when it comes to this community. Again, they, all they asked for was for this building to be lower than what it is. And I asked for that as well, and now here we are where they said, "No, we'll just go for the full 70 feet." That's disrespectful to this community. That's disrespectful to the people who live within those blocks of this community. Please understand me when I say that.
I, I think I'm, I think I am understanding you, but from, I mean, from a builder's standpoint, I can, there's certain factors that fall into it where it no longer makes sense, okay?
What doesn't make sense when they said 58 feet?
We can say, let me finish. We can say, "Hey, you know what? We want it at 30 feet." And they can say, "You know what? It makes no fiscal sense to build it at 30 feet." That's fine, that's a resolution, right? What I'm saying is, I just don't know that this thing's been fleshed out all the way. I think, I mean, it's, it's in your ward, and, you know, you've already made the movement to deny it, and, and that's good. I just probably would have done something. I will do something differently, but I just wanted to share my thoughts, is all.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, the motion is, on the table is to deny the application. So cast your votes. Fails four to five. Oh. Sorry, didn't see that. Fails four to five. Okay?
Again, that's very, very disrespectful to this community for this to have been approved in the manner that it is.
Well, just to be clear, we're, we're kind of in, we're kind of in limbo right now. Nothing's been approved.
Yeah, it's, it's not approved.
Yeah.
So right now, it hasn't been approved. So the question is whether someone wants to make a motion to approve it or not. Otherwise, it's-
And I'll, I'll move to defer it again because the question needs to be asked with this community, a conversation needs to be had with this community when it comes to the height of this building. I've had the conversation with this developer, and he needs to face this community and tell them what he wants, and this community should be able to speak since obviously I can't.
And the motion to defer takes precedence, so you have to vote on that before any other motion.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to defer. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to defer. Two weeks?
Yes.
19th. Is there any further questions or discussion about that? Okay, go ahead, Councilman Stone.
So I guess my question is to you, Councilwoman Nice, I mean-
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Nice, sorry, is, I mean, do you think there's anything we can flesh out on this, or no?
Well, it sounds like if they already had the possibility of going to 58 feet, that there can still be a conversation because I do not want a 70-foot building sitting on 13th Street. And the residents don't want a 70-foot building sitting on 13th Street. And these developers have already said, "Well, we, when we, we asked immediately for 50, they came back." And that's when they came back on Monday, late Monday, early Tuesday, that the 58 was something that they didn't want to do. They were just gonna go for the full monty of 70.
And that, that was two weeks ago. This has been deferred three separate times.
I know, it's a month out.
Yeah, I mean, this is now the third time in which it's come before the city. It was, it actually came first on September 24th, and then October 8th, and then October 22nd. This is the fourth time it's been in front. And so respectfully, I understand there's a difference of opinion, but there's nothing to be gained other than taking more of the council's time, having the exact same argument you just heard.
That's why we're here. That's why we sit here. That's why we were elected. That's why we're here to make those types of decisions. So two more weeks shouldn't be a problem. We gotta be here anyway.
At what point does it end? I mean, we-
Okay.
Again, I said that.
Well, I, I guess what I want to be clear on is, does the applicant not want this deferred, number one?
Correct.
And number two, is the applicant telling us that 58 feet won't work?
Correct.
I want to be clear on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now 58 feet won't work? Is that what you're saying?
I, I, I told you two weeks ago, the last deferral, I stood at that podium and I made clear we were happy to continue the conversation, but 70 feet was what we had to have based upon the way that the design works out and that there was nothing less than that. And so I-
Then where did, where am I getting 58 feet from? Did we not get that, Mr. Jordan?
That was about a month ago.
No, it was not.
Yeah. They were going to go, someone suggested 58 feet, and they went back and looked at 58 feet.
We suggested 58.
No, you, we suggested 50 feet. They went back and came back with 58 feet, and then you said 50 feet.
And that was not a month ago that 58 feet came in front of me. That was barely two weeks ago, right before that last meeting, the day before that last meeting, actually.
So you rejected the 58 feet?
Because we asked for 50. But again, I do not want a 70-foot building, and the community does not want a 70-foot building that sits on 13th Street. And again, the reason I deferred that was because of the conversation. And I told Mr. Box, "You, normally, you'll tell me what's going on before the meeting, if we're going for it or we're not." And he did not. We didn't have a conversation about what they were gonna do as far as rejecting the 50, the 50 feet after we countered back from their 58 feet. So that's why I deferred that meeting, so we can continue to have a conversation. So that's where that came from. And in the meantime, that's when this neighborhood really understood what was happening in their community and decided to take a stand and, and come here where we are today.
So you wanted 50. At some, at some point, you guys offered 58, or we're looking into 58?
We were looking into 58. We knew a minimum had to be 58, and we were told that 50 was the number.
Man, does 58 not work versus 50?
It doesn't work for us.
I'm just asking, Councilwoman Nice, does 58 not work versus 50, or?
I would rather have 50 because, again, as you see-
We would all rather have a million.
Hold on, let me finish. I'll let you talk.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Again, as we're looking at this, there's nothing over 50 feet. So that's where my concern is when it comes to a building of this height and this magnitude. Again, I do not want a 70-foot building that sits on 13th Street. So that's where we are. There is no, the community has, does not have a desire to see a 70-foot building sitting smack dab in their community overlooking their neighborhood. So therefore, if we have to compromise and come down for that, I'm willing to do that for the community, but the community needs to be a part of that conversation, not me. That's what I'm asking. That's why I'm asking for the deferral. So now, let the community have that conversation, because obviously, they got the information late, too late for us now where we are in this process. And I think it, our due diligence as the city council is to allow that community to be able to work that out with the applicant and the developer.
And David, you're saying, because I'm listening to Council Stone, Councilman Stone's question, you're saying that when that 58 was on the table, you went back, applicant went back, and structurally, architecturally, they're, they're arguing they cannot do less than 70? Is that what I'm hearing?
68, too, but, but yes. I mean, it, it's 68 feet, 2 inches, but yes, we cannot do the, the 58.
Okay, I see you that...
Yes, sir.
Then where did 58 come from? Because you all presented 58 feet to us.
So there was confusion about the, the size of the lot. And so in order to do 58, you'd have to have an additional lot that we just don't have.
Okay, so then why did you, again, present 58 feet as an option if you never intended on 58 feet?
So what we said was, we're going to go look at it and see if we could work. But we knew 50 wouldn't work, just because of the way the numbers work with the elevator base. But we were going to look, we knew it would be at least 58, but 58 didn't end up working. But we knew in that analysis that there was nothing short of 58 that could work, and then in the end, 58 wouldn't work.
Well, I guess the confusion here is, obviously, I was presented a number of 58. I was presented a number of 58, when actuality was, there was never a consideration for 58. It was always a consideration of 70. So there, there's your answer right there. This community hasn't been informed, and obviously, I, as a councilperson, haven't been, haven't been informed about what this is supposed to be either.
All right, we have a motion to defer on the table. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Motion fails four to five.
So thank you again for this point in this community and not being the stewards of Ward 7 and what this community has asked for.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there any discussion regarding that motion?
What are we doing?
This, I understand, Larry. This is a, this is now a motion to approve the, the application.
So a green is to approve?
Green is to approve the application. Okay, all right. Was there a second?
Mind you, this is, again, 70 feet that you are approving for this community, and that, that's wrong.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes five to four. Okay?
So I hope you all are happy with the 70-foot building that you don't have to be subjected to in a community that I serve.
All right. Item 9A12 at 1400 Northwest 16th Street, going from R1 to SBU D 1149. This is Ward 6, but I'll pause a moment for, sorry, Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah, so this is just an item to allow for both office and residential development in, to have a live-work space on 16th Street, and I will motion for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Councilman McAtee, you need to activate your machine there.
Flip it all the way to the right.
Hmm. You done broke it. Okay, there we go. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 13 was deferred at the beginning of the meeting, which brings us to 9B. These are ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval. Item 9B1 is a special permit to operate a private outdoor gun range in the AA Agricultural District at 12301 North Indian Meridian. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I understand. I see the representative for the applicant.
Yes, Eric Rose for the applicant, Dr. Cagle.
I actually don't have any questions. Does anyone have any questions on this? With that, I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. 9B2, special permit to operate a movie theater serving mixed beverages in the PUD 598 and the Northeast Gateway Urban Conservation District at 6001 North Martin Luther Kane. Councilwoman Nice?
And this is actually for, for Tinseltown, if I'm not mistaken. So just with that, I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 9C is an ordinance on final hearing. This relates to OG&E wastewater purchase rates. There were two previous meetings on this topic. One had a presentation, one had a public hearing, and today is potential final vote. Is there a motion or any discussion on the ordinance? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 9D, this is an ordinance on final hearing. It was deferred from October 22nd, establishing two-hour time-limited parking on the north side of Northwest 11th Street from North Dewey, et cetera. This is in Ward 6. There is someone who has signed up to speak. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah.
Okay. Chris Fleming.
I guess it's still, still morning. Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present today. Bob Howard, McKee Clag, and I are partners in Midtown Renaissance. We own the property adjacent to the proposed on-street parking on Northwest 11th. We have redeveloped over 40 buildings in the neighborhood, and I'm here today to support, to express my support for the streetcar. I'm here today to express my support for walkability and pedestrian safety. I'm here today to express my support for the businesses in the area and also their employees, and I'm here today to express my support for the coexistence of all modes of transportation. I, I believe that this should be viewed as an all-the-above decision and not an either-or decision. When we build and develop buildings and their surrounding sites, we engage in ultimate decision-making under constraints exercise. We examine the available, the available information. We look at the project through multiple lenses. We reconcile the constraints, and we choose a path forward, not unlike what you guys do here. And that's all I'm asking for you guys to do, is to look at the constraints, use multiple lenses to reconcile those constraints, and choose a path forward. Streets constitute a major part of public spaces in any city. I think, as you all know, planning and designing great streets is a complex process which involves many components and various challenges, including competing priorities for space, impact area businesses and residents, and differing political views. In advance of this meeting, I provided each of you with information that I feel strongly supports approval of this item, and I have extra copies of that should you all need that or want that. Those reasons to support this include strong neighborhood support. I believe there were 15 or 20 letters that were provided either directly to you or via me to you. On-street parking promotes pedestrian safety and walkability, and there are experts that will attest to that or have written on that. This proposed on-street parking supports new sales tax revenue. We're going to have retail and restaurant in this development. And additionally, each on-street parking stall, experts say, can generate up to $3,000 or $300,000 in annual sales to a retail district. The importance of having these stalls to each shopper or restaurant patron cannot be overemphasized. Additionally, Downtown Design Review Committee, Traffic Commission, and Department of Public Works approve this proposed on-street parking. The City of Oklahoma City's Downtown Development Framework promotes on-street parking in retail areas, and this is identified as a retail priority area, and that Downtown Design Development Framework also supports on-street parking in areas where the streetcar exists and adjacent to the streetcar.
Very good.
The City of Oklahoma City Midtown Urban Renewal Plan also recommends on-street parking throughout Midtown, even adjacent to the streetcar. And then, I think I also provided you this in a, in a request to your question, Councilwoman Hammond, on the parking ratios in the area, and this area is half as parked as the standards say it should be. And we go to great pains to minimize parking while providing enough or a complimentary parking for our area businesses, or that's what we try to do. And then also, the on-street parking exists from Broadway to Walker already, and we're just asking to extend it from Walker to Dewey, so one more block. So additionally, approval of this item today does not prevent future removal of this on-street parking should it become a problem for streetcar service time or for streetcar safety. I think there are procedures in place that allow Embark or any private citizen to request the removal of on-street parking. And I, and I think that would be a reasonable path forward in this case, and I would propose that. I, again, appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity today with the deferral a couple weeks ago for us to come and, and for me to come and share our, our thoughts on this. And, you know, a vote to approve this item is a vote that supports current and future neighborhood businesses and their employees, and a vote to approve this item today is a vote that supports the idea that the streetcar and on-street parking and walkability and pedestrian safety can and should coexist. Thank you again, and I would be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Chris? Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah, I'd just like, if, where's Jason? If Jason can come speak to the concerns that they brought to Traffic and Transportation Commission about streetcar blockages and on-street parking as it relates to the streetcar, yes, if you'd like to come forward.
So, good morning, Mayor and Council. Jason Fairbrus, Director of Public Transportation and Parking. So, let's start off by saying, we do agree with the comments that were made earlier in that there's, you know, a lot of different systems and priorities that make downtown work and allow us to have the vibrant downtown that we have now. We certainly recognize that. However, with our responsibilities in terms of delivering reliable transit service, specifically the Oklahoma City streetcar, we do take the position that any additional on-street parking along the route will likely lead to additional service interruptions. And so, again, if I'm looking at this, or our staff is looking at this, just through the, the standpoint of delivering reliable transit service, we know that, you know, the, the most frequent interruption we have to our service is through people not correctly parking in the on-street parking spaces along the streetcar route, thus causing delays in service. And just to share a few numbers with you that Councilwoman Hammond had requested, since we have launched operations, we have tracked 893 total blockages. So that's 893 times the streetcar service has been interrupted because somebody has not correctly parked in one of those parallel parking spots. Now, January through April, we were actually averaging about 145 per month. And we took some, some mitigations and some enhanced pavement markings to remind people of the importance of parking behind that line for the parallel parking spots and, and not interfering with streetcar movement. And since introducing those pavement markings, we have seen our blockages decrease considerably. May through September, we're down to about 62 blockages. So we have seen some significant improvement, but still, even with that improvement, improvement, blockages along the route are, are number-one service interruption. And then just to take that, just a step further to give the council a sense of what a service interruption is to the Oklahoma City streetcar, essentially, we have, you know, customers onboard the streetcar. The streetcar is unable to pass, so the standard operating procedures are for the operator to halt, obviously begin blowing or activating his horn. We call for supervisors from the storage and maintenance facility to come into the field and try to clear that blockage. Sometimes that blockage is cleared by simply folding in a mirror on a, on a vehicle, like what we, what I experienced this weekend. Sometimes it's having to actually have the vehicle towed. Now, we haven't done a lot of toes. We've towed about 29 vehicles since the start of inception. Generally, what happens is our supervisors begin scouring the, the closest businesses and trying to find out whose vehicle is blocking the streetcar. That results in an average delay of somewhere between 10, 15, maybe 18 minutes, but that's the interruptions that we're experiencing. So, again...
And during which time the passenger is, is, according to your protocols, trapped in the streetcar, right?
Exactly. We, we, we do advise our customers to remain on the streetcar for safety reasons, and at the same time, and I've experienced it, I've, I've experienced blockages. Mayor Holt, I think you and I experienced a blockage together one, one time on the streetcar. But our, our operators do a, a good job of letting our customers know, okay, we have a blockage, I've called for a supervisor. Once that supervisor's dispatched, they'll usually let the customers know that a supervisor is on the way, will be, will be back underway momentarily. So we manage it from that standpoint. But yes, typically, we try to keep people on the vehicle until we can move to the next platform.
And it also, like, so, and I, because I did not realize this when, but it makes sense, but it wasn't something that I really quite, didn't quite appreciate about the blockages, whether it's 2 to 20 minutes, is that every single streetcar along the route has to stop.
Yes, actually, yeah, thank, thank you for mentioning that. So it, one blockage halts the entire system.
Right, so if, if something sits along Broadway, someone gets blocked, everyone in Bricktown is also halted.
That's right, because it's critical, as you know, to maintain that spacing with the vehicles along the system. So the last thing you want to do is have your vehicles bunch up and then spend all the time basically getting them unbunched. It's, so everyone typically will halt.
Hey, Jason?
Oh, sorry.
Go, go ahead, Mark. No, you, go ahead.
I guess the one thing I'd say is, I'm the one that moved to defer this, and I feel kind of badly about it. I've always been very pro-business, pro-developer, but when I read the agenda item, it said that Embark had concerns. Well, when I went with Jason, and we drove out there, and who was the other staff member that was so helpful?
Jesse Rush, our streetcar operations manager.
We went out and we walked around and we looked at it, and it's, it's more than a concern. It's, it should have said that Embark opposes it for these reasons. It should have, and, and, and so I took concern to mean, they, they expressed some concerns, but other staff members were proposing this needed to be done. And so I think Jason said it best when we were out there. We're talking about total on 11th and then the north-south street, nine parking spots? Is that right? And we'd lose three?
Six.
Say it again, help me.
So there was, I believe, nine on-street proposed, three on Dewey, six on 11th, and so we're requesting to not have the six spaces on 11th.
So they'll still have nine parking spaces, is my point, right?
No, three. Three of the nine they requested.
Okay, three, okay, thank you.
Jason, excuse me, I have just a general question, not specifically pertaining to this item, but is there a common reason why some vehicles extend over that line? It seems pretty clear to me. Is it because they're trying to fit too large of a vehicle, like an SUV, in a space that's better suited for a smaller vehicle, or they're just not parking correctly?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a combination of various things, but generally, it's the larger vehicles, like, like, example, the one that I was involved in this weekend, for example, was a, was a large pickup truck that, you know, the wheels, the tires were all behind the line, but the mirror was extending past. And so that's frequent.
So is there a fine currently in place for a vehicle or any apparatus extending beyond the line?
If, only in the case if the vehicle is towed and impounded, then there's the fine, and I believe in... and I believe an administrative fee for the impoundment.
Just a second. Let me divert the next, oh, Kenny's not here. I'm wondering, could we consider imposing a fine on vehicles that extend beyond that line and it would be administered by the same people that do the parking violations? Can that be added as just a fine? And then the second question is, and so that's directed towards Kenny if he returns. And then, secondly, so this street, 11th Street, I couldn't really tell by the picture, is there off-street, or, I mean, on-street parking on the opposite side of the street, or is it strictly on this one side that the streetcar is going down?
Yeah, in that area, I don't recall there being any, like, on-street parking right across from where the development is going. There's a, there's an area there that's reserved for basically dumpsters. So there's some dumpsters right there on the south side of 11th.
Okay. Is there the ability to add on-street parking? Maybe someone else could address that, on the opposite side of the street.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe on the south.
I think the applicant may be coming to address that.
Yes. Chris Fleming, again. We own the property of the south as well, and although it's technically not on-street parking because it's not in the right-of-way, it's within private property, there are parking spaces there that we've added a few years ago.
Okay. And we're not considering impacting those in any way, it's just the ones that run alongside the streetcar?
Correct.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, the spots, Chris, you're referring to are actually pull-ins on the property, right?
That is correct.
I'm looking at it right now.
Yes.
So Kenny, can we add a fine that could be administered by our traffic people in terms of any vehicle or apparatus to that vehicle extending across the line without it being towed?
You probably still want to have the option to tow it.
Yeah.
Just in case it was a real danger. But yes, you could make it a fine, too. It's just a matter of amending the code to provide that violation and fine. And also, Haley can work with Jason to prepare an ordinance on that.
I think, well, so I, speaking just as, so when I look at the blockages, it does significantly go down, which I would even, significantly, it still, it looks about two, on average, two blockages per day in that kind of May through August. In September, which we know there were quite a few large events, including the Scissor Tail Park opening downtown, in September, it shoots back up to 90. So my concern with a fine would be that, my guess is the people who are acquainted with being downtown more often and parking are, they've gotten the education about, you know, don't park over the line, your mirror needs to fold in, or what have you. But I fear that a fine is going to adversely affect the people who aren't as used to coming downtown. I would be more interested in amending, seeing if there's a way to amend something to say that additional, because while I will concede that there's a framework that says that on-street parking is compatible with the streetcar, that framework was, from what I could see, published before the streetcar was ever implemented. So I don't know if people were quite anticipating this issue. And I'd be curious to see, can we amend something to say that we aren't going to add, we're going to prevent people from even being able to park instead of intervening later, seeing if there's a way to say no more on-street parallel parking along the streetcar, particularly when, in this case, it's not a road diet, it's creating more pavement to create the parking spaces rather than just taking public space and restriping it. So that's my, I guess that's just, I want to insert that as far as the fine issue is. I just, I get concerned about punishing individuals with this, with a fine versus just, let's just not have any more parallel spots along the rails so that we can prevent people from making those mistakes.
Well, so I'm in agreement with denying or eliminating these parking spaces as Jason is suggesting to drop the number from nine down to three. I'm okay with that as it relates to 11th Street. I'm talking about the route in general, because like on Robinson, sometimes I have to just run into my office real quickly, and if I see a spot, granted, I'm in a very small car, I can do that. But these larger vehicles just need to learn somehow, and maybe it's a fine that helps them learn to keep them out of those types of spaces and limit them to smaller cars. That's all I'm suggesting, is that we look at that. I'm not coming up with an idea today, I'm just saying, let's look at it, and maybe that would help further reduce the number of incidents that the streetcars-
I think it's a good idea. I'd like to take a look at it.
Yeah.
I'm still adamant that a cow catcher is the final solution on this thing. If you have a cow catcher, they will learn to park inside the line, and the streetcar keeps going along.
That'll teach them.
Oh, you mean add that to the streetcar.
Yeah. We do have a citizen who signed up to be heard on this, but go ahead, James.
Yeah, well, I just want to say thank you for sharing the context there for the streetcar. I also want to thank the businesses for being here, especially to Lori from Stella. She gave me my first job when I finished grad school in Stillwater, you know? I mean, just couldn't figure out how to pay a bill. And so I really want to thank you, and I want you to know that the reason why I'm, you know, not in support of the on-street parking is very specifically because of this concern that I have about the streetcar and its frequency. Before the streetcar began, you, Councilman Greenwell and I, as COPPA trustees, I just remember for a whole year being super concerned, not so much about on-street parking blocks, that never even crossed my mind. We were concerned about frequency and other places around the country like Atlanta that were struggling with their streetcar implementation. And I just knew that with the streetcar, this was our chance to start really promoting to choice riders, public transportation as an alternative. And that meant that the streetcar had to really work, and it had to be frequent. It had to be there every 15 minutes on time, and people had to know it was reliable in that way. So these blockages was something I didn't see coming, but now it's a concern that I have, having also served on COPPA since the implementation of the streetcar. So this is nothing, you know, anti-business, this is nothing anti-personal property. This is about making sure that this system works. And I promise you all, word to, we're doing everything we can to get a bus rapid transit system up and going by spring of 2023 so that people as far from Northwest Expressway and Meridian all the way down Classen will be able to hop on a reliable public transit system to get down to Midtown and utilize your businesses even more than they're doing right now. And also a thank you because I bike or drive or walk from Paseo to downtown on Walker, and what you all have done to revitalize that area means the world to me, and I know I'm not alone with that.
Okay. Do you mind if we go to Joy Reardon real quick?
Yeah, I do have an opposition to the on-street parking in the area that y'all are bringing up. One thing that most people don't realize is, under the new ADA laws of 2012, from the face of the building to the edge of the curb, it's supposed to be 60 inches. And the area that you're talking about, they want to put these onsite parking spots, you're going to take away, you're going to have to move the curb and sidewalk over, which is going to limit your amount of, for ambulatory people and everything else, it's great. Sorry. It's great for that. But what about people with the ADA? The people with canes, white canes? What about people in wheelchairs? What about people in walkers and stuff like that, that would love to go to these places? But when you shorten that sidewalk up because you want to put more parking and everything, it means less and less of us actually getting down these sidewalks.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll be back.
Okay.
Well, I'll just say, so I am in agreeance that I want to see multimodal transportation and the harmony of all of those things. But in this particular case, I see one mode of transportation impeding another, so that's not, that's, I don't see harmony there. So I'm also, I'm going to, again, motion to deny this, and I'd be happy to provide signs for people that there's some on-street parking up on Classen Boulevard, just a few stones throw, if the concern about parking, or there's some parking lots just two blocks away that are shared parking for the area. So I, again, I'm going to motion to deny this.
Just clarification, when you deny that, will they still be able to have the three parking spaces that Jason was referring to in his report?
Yes, so in the last meeting, we approved the parking spaces along Dewey, which I believe were the three plus at least two ADA, I'm sure, I think so.
Is there a second? So we have a motion and a second to deny the application, yes.
Just for clarification, if I'm really concerned about uptime of the streetcar, then I'm going to vote to deny this particular item that's coming up for a vote. Is that right? Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yes, the vote is for denying the, yeah.
A yes is to deny.
A yes is to deny. Okay. Is there any, are there any other comments?
Yes.
Yes. So if this is denied, Chris, I'm certainly willing to work with you to try to get creative about other locations if that happens, you know, for more parking that doesn't interfere with the streetcar. Okay. Is there any other comments or discussion in regards to this vote? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one. Okay. Moving on to 9E. This is a public hearing regarding ordinance relating to the general schedule of fees, et cetera. This relates to, I'll come back to your thing in a second, I forgot. This relates to permit fees on our river corridor. There was a presentation at the last meeting. This is just the public hearing, the second of three meetings on this topic. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to return back to item 9C where we failed to consider an emergency that was requested by staff on that ordinance regarding the OG&E wastewater rates. I would entertain a motion to that effect. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. The emergency on 9C is adopted. Now moving back to regular order. 9F1, this is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, except for the one previously stricken. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution. Oh, sorry. Man, you got to move, man.
I'm here, members of Council. Bob Howgie, 5817 East 86th Street, Tulsa. I'm an attorney with Kivell, Ramon &amp; Francis. We are working with the owner of a property, I think it's on 9G1AJ, it's in the-
Oh, so you're on G, your item does not appear at 9F?
No, I'm not on that.
Okay. Hold that thought.
Sit back down. Done.
All right. The resolution at 9F2 declaring that the structures at 9F1 are dilapidated. I believe we had a motion. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're at 9G1. Sir, please, welcome.
That property is G1AJ 4113 Southeast 45th Street. It's also in 9H1Z. It's both listed as unsecured and abandoned.
And what is the property again?
4113 Southeast 45th Street. I'm sitting.
AJ.
Oh, AJ, got it.
AJ, I'm sorry.
Okay, got it. Okay.
We represent the property owner. It is a property that has gone through foreclosure. I think it's been remediated in the past, but there are some issues that have come back up. I'm asking that this be deferred to the November 19th meeting to give us the opportunity to bring in our property preservation folks and secure the property and address whatever issues are located on the property.
Just unsecured property there. Photos show that, that I think windows, doors, things of that nature, this time of year, especially as the temperatures get colder, we really like to get them secured. I think fire hazard goes up a little quicker this time of year.
These pictures are from 1028. Is it secured today?
I know our office has contacted our client to send the property preservation folks out. I was in court in western Oklahoma yesterday. I'm not aware, I did, you probably saw me working my emails here, I was hoping to get some information whether they'd been out, but I don't have that information. I know we've made the request.
Okay. I would, I would like to actually go ahead and leave it on here, and I would just ask that you work with our staff. And, I mean, we've got some time here, nothing's going to happen tomorrow, so if you can just work with them, but we'll leave it on there in case it comes back up again, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that puts us back on the public hearing for the items listed at G1 as unsecured structures. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution. I've got that. At G2, declaring that the structures are unsecured, and a second. This is for the items here listed, except for the ones that were stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9H1, this is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for the ones previously stricken. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Sure, you are on this one, too, so.
Can we not consider that abandoned and give us that opportunity to secure it?
Well, you're going to have the opportunity to secure it.
Okay, I just-
No, I'm sorry, Chad, if it stays on this, they have 30 days?
They'll have about two weeks.
Two weeks.
To get it secured, and we'll work with it.
Can you guys exchange cards so he'll feel comfortable with-
Absolutely.
-the time process? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under this public hearing at 9H1? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9H2 declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9I1, this is the second of two public hearings regarding a resolution amending the June 18th City Council resolution approving certain fire and other sales tax expenditures. There was a presentation at the last meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9I2 amending the June 18th, 2019 City Council resolution regarding fire, sales tax expenditures.
Some moved.
Thank you. We got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we are at 9J1. This is a public hearing, the first of two, regarding a resolution to amend the June 18th City Council resolution approving appropriations for the Police Department. The resolution is found at item 9J2. It is to be introduced today, set for final hearing on November 19th, and this was already kind of covered-
That's right. This is- I'm sorry. This is the resolution for the use of the public safety sales tax funds that is consistent with what Chief Gorley presented on the budget amendment.
Okay. So, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this public hearing regarding item 9J2? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to introduce the resolution for consideration. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9K1, this is a resolution authorizing and directing the municipal councilor to file an action in the District Court of Oklahoma County to foreclose the right to reopen the west 40 feet of the north-south right-of-way for Walnut Avenue, south of Northeast 2nd. I believe we were expecting a presentation.
I think Wiley is, Wiley Williams is going to make a presentation on this one. This is in relation to the agreement that we have for the sale of that Bricktown parking lot where Bank First was a partnership. Bank First has entered in a partnership with another developer to construct a parking garage, and we just needed to close an easement on this property in order to be able to complete the sale.
And here's Wiley.
There's Wiley right there.
We do not need to do this in executive session, Wiley?
We don't need executive session, right?
We do not need an executive session. This is a result of a purchase and sale agreement that we entered into several months-
This is a result of a purchase and sale agreement that we entered into several months ago to sell the Brick, a portion of the Bricktown parking lot that Don Karchmer has a lease on. And as part of that, we're selling to him the surface under Walnut Street Bridge, and in order to do that, we have to close and vacate our surface access to that. But we will reserve an air easement for the road.
Okay. All right, thank you, Wiley. Would anyone like to move the resolution?
Move approval.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9L1, resolution authorizing municipal councillor to enter into an agreed settlement and journal entry of judgment in the case styled OKC v DCV Retail, I don't believe we need executive session?
No.
Entertain a motion for the resolution? Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9M1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Durbin &amp; McIlwve v City of OKC. We do not need executive session? Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Now we will turn to an item that was noticed properly, but not with the original agenda. It is an item requiring separate vote, it is styled as extra item, it is a little off the agenda, but I will put it here while we're still on items requiring separate votes. This is to enter into executive session on advice of the municipal councillor to receive confidential communications with its attorney regarding pending litigation in the case of City of Oklahoma City versus Lamar Central Outdoor, et cetera. I believe we may wish to actually go into executive session at this time rather than hold this till the end of the meeting, because there's another item that relates to this that looms ahead. So I'd take a motion to go into executive session.
Move us into executive, executive session.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously, we will return.